Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome the audience and all of our staff members to our September 24th meeting of the Placerville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and welcome again this evening. I have it on good authority that our air conditioning is working. Give it about five more minutes and I think we'll be there. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to please call a roll this evening.
Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public. Item 3.1, brief council member comments this evening. Any members of the council have anything to discuss this evening, or to announce, rather?
We had a brief, well, it wasn't a brief, but we had the beginning meeting of our discussion about correspondence between the city and the public and finding a method and system that would meet as many needs as possible and keep it as simple as possible. So, we're starting on it, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it goes. Also, an announcement that Saturday, October 12th, is going to be the City of Placerville's Free Annual Fall Community Cleanup Day, and it's going to be located at Placerville Station, Mosquito Road parking ride, from 8:00 to 1:30. That's, I think that's going to be, take all your junk. They take everything, I tell you.
Not everything.
Well, maybe not everything.
Close enough.
Yeah, so that's it.
You could bring the kitchen sink.
Yes, yes, you could.
It does not matter. Maybe not. All right, I'm going to ask Councilmember Taylor if she had any announcements this evening.
We'll just touch on what Dennis mentioned. We are working on looking at upgrading website functions and public outreach, and along those lines, I set up a survey, which basically asks the public how they receive emergency information and critical information from the city, and it's posted to the city's Facebook page. So, if you all could take that survey, that would be really helpful. Thanks.
Oh, thanks, Karen. And Karen, can you give us an update as to when the Cannabis Committee is going to meet again?
The next meeting is October 14th, yeah.
All right, so the process moves on. Thank you. Patty, did you have any comments this evening?
Could I ask, Kara, a question?
Sure, yeah.
How does that coincide, then, with what the police department, like, emergency numbers and stuff? Is it different?
So, right now, we're just kind of trying to get information and see what our options are. We are definitely hoping to have a coordinated system with the police.
Okay, because I'm interested firesafe-wise, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
All right, thank you, Patty.
I did get an email today from Jerry Barton talking about back Walk to School Day.
Yeah. Can you share that with the audience?
I didn't bring it, and if I, I can't remember, was it October, was it?
Coming up soon.
October 2nd? October 2nd? I know it's coming up really soon.
Sierra and Schnell School.
Great.
And, I think that's it. And other schools in the county, yeah.
In Placerville.
Thank you, Patty. That's always a funny event. Hopefully, we'll have beautiful fall weather.
No announcements, but I thought I'd ask our mayor and city manager if there were any new updates on PG&E and potential PSPS.
For today?
For today, or tomorrow, in Placerville.
We did receive an email earlier today that PG&E is considering a second power safety, public safety power shut-off. Thank you, I had to get those, that acronym right. Possibly later tonight. They do include El Dorado County in that again, however, they, in talking to County OES, it's similar to last time, they're only looking at North County, Georgetown, Cool, Pilot Hill, Garden Valley area. And even those are still pretty iffy, but that, if it did happen, apparently it would only happen in those areas, so.
And, you know, I don't understand it, because like, I was watching the news before I got here, and they were saying they're turning the electricity back on over there in Placer County, so I, I don't.
I'll finally run company.
Sorry.
All right, well, thank you for the update. Vice Mayor, did you have anything?
You've got more information than you are.
I do not.
Thank you.
All right, well, yeah. On a fun note, I'll be bringing this up again, but, and this is really great, because this deals with our history, and sadly, one that is almost always neglected. And on October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., in the Placerville Union Cemetery, which is, has a number of extremely historic graves in it, it's a project of the Arts and Culture of El Dorado. It's an arts incubator program. It's the Save the Graves Coalition of El Dorado County. The program is Dead Men Do Tell Tales. Now, it's being put on by a couple of volunteers this year that have been ramrodding this through a variety of organizations, county and city, to get approval for it, and this will be the first of what they hope to be very many fundraisers, and the idea behind this is to highlight, these will be actual living, you know, they'll have actual actors portraying selected graves of historic folks with historic names from this county. I know one of them is going to be a Fosil family member, for example. They've gone through, they're going through a great deal of effort to make this showcase the fact that there's a lot of history out there that is always looking for somebody to take better care of it, and hopefully, they, this event will be one that'll set this off for many years to come again. That's October 26th, and I'll be happy to bring it up again. Dead men do tell tales, so I'm looking forward to going to that myself. Regarding PG&E, thank you, Cleve, for bringing that up. I did get an email later this afternoon saying that they had decided to, they had decided to probably shut down. Does that sound decisive? An area that affects basically the American River Canyon, the, you know, the confluence between El Dorado County and Placer County, and that, I guess, makes sense, the winds are expected in that canyon. And, yeah, you're correct, they are still restoring people that they turned off last night. I think we need to express to PG&E, if, from what I'm, the reports that I am getting is what they're doing this year is they're picking a time based on weather forecasts and then sticking to it. Last night, the winds never materialized, so a number of, what, 20,000 or 30,000 customers in Placer and Nevada County sat in the dark all night with a light breeze blowing outside. So, I don't think that that is.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, that is not an acceptable way for them to be operating their system, so hopefully, we'll get a chance to express that concern to them. They can't just say, "Oh, well, it's 6:00 o'clock, it's dead calm out there right now, but we're going to shut 10,000 people off in Placerville." The fallacy to that is the two- to three-day restoration, that has to be stressed again. You don't just automatically throw that switch back. It's massive undertaking, it's, that we're paying for. And, just lastly, it's disheartening to see, watching the news reports on it last night, as the public is buying into this as an acceptable way for them to operate. And there was a lot of, "Oh, well, I guess it's better, it's the safest thing for them to do." That is just rewarding 15 or 20 years of poor management and their failure to maintain staffing and facilities all through the entire state of California. We have some of the highest electric rates in the United States. I don't recall my rate going down at any time in the last 15 years, if they've cut back these crews and these maintenance men and these maintenance programs. My rate's just gone up. So, we still have some communicating to do with PG&E as they roll this forward, and hopefully, that we'll be lucky this year, and we will not be bothered by it, because it was a massive impact last year. I want to thank Cleve, he was, he was standing by. I tried to find out where he was standing by, but he stood by all weekend, keeping in touch with the department, with the Sheriff's Department and PG&E and OES, to get the information from PG&E, and it was not an easy task, so thank you for spending your weekend.
He thankfully relayed it to us.
Yeah, and we didn't have to do anything.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, anyway. Please, please don't let these guys off the hook for this. This is a big operation. All right, with that, if there's no other comments, I'll move on to closed session. And Mr. Driscoll, I don't think we had anything this evening?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda, is there a motion for adoption?
Move for adoption.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, agenda is adopted. We have no ceremonial matters this evening, which moves us on to public comment. I will first ask the city clerk and the city manager if there are any new written communications that we need to be aware of.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have one item that was provided to you tonight. It is an email that we received from the Wapoomnas Tribe this afternoon, about 3:35. It's related to item 12.1 on your agenda. Basically, I will read this to you, so you know what it is, and the public can hear it, too, but I think you can take that up as part of item 12.1 when we get to that. The email says, "Dear Terry," it was sent to Terry Zeller, our Community Services Director, "the complaint has been augmented and refiled as requested by the FPPC. The tribe is requesting the city stay any decision regarding the award of contract or lease of the buildings to the Arts Council. Attached is the previous letter requesting a stay. Our attorney is out of town, he will be following up with a letter tomorrow." And then I've attached the letter that they provided, which was the letter they provided a month ago when they originally filed the FPPC complaint. So, that's just for your information, if you want to take any action based on that, I would recommend that you do it, under item 12.1.
All right, thank you, Cleve, appreciate that. Regina, did you have anything additional? All right, thank you very much. So, that brings us on to public oral comment. This is the time in the meeting when any member of the public is welcome to address the city council on any items that are, that is, an issue, excuse me, that is not on this evening's agenda. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and limit your subject to items that are of common interest to the council and in our purview. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council this evening? If you would please come forward and state your name. Yes, sir? Yes, sir, it is. Oh, no problem. Is there a member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item?
My name is Jonathan Gainesborough, I'm a 25-year resident in Placerville. My phone number's (530) 903-1179. City Council and Mayor, I commend you on the excellent job you're doing in Placerville. However, there is a pressing issue with the homeless situation, as evidenced by Lumsden Park. The cold winter season is approaching, the first day of autumn was yesterday. Last Thursday, I attended a meeting with the annual nomadic winter shelter, which runs from November 1st to March 31st. It's commendable that the 30 churches in town, five of them have taken five of the nights. However, the churches in town should not be shouldered with the responsibility for the homeless. The federal government and our state government in California has now addressed that county and city governments, the city with $22 million annual budget, the county with $550 million budget. The responsibility for the homeless and for shelter is on your shoulders, according to the federal and state government. After I speak, I'll hand out a Mountain Democrat editorial that I'm about to excerpt. It's past time for a navigation center, or at a minimum, a Placerville winter season homeless shelter. You can help the churches this season, initiating Tuesday and Wednesday night at a perfect location, which would be the abandoned juvie center, right near the higher Superior Court and near the library, out of a residential area. Housing first is your state, California's premier policy. Wraparound services such as a navigation center tied in with a shelter is proven to produce lasting results, but it is like filling a sieve if all you do is provide the services without shelter. Here is an excerpt of the Mountain Democrat, September 18th article. The article went on to say that using the abandoned juvie center, or the armory, or the former Boys and Girls Club would be a precedent, and the community would appreciate such an altruistic, pioneering, and actually friendly initiative by the mayor and the city council and the government, that they pay your salaries with their taxes. There is a citywide problem which needs to be addressed. And so, with 45 seconds left, let me just excerpt what they say here. Volunteers, the Placerville Juvenile Hall could be an ideal initial location for an ongoing shelter, which the state is mandating every city, every county, to spend its budget to shelter the least, the last, and the lost. As it comes to an end here, winter is coming, the homeless are swarming shopping centers, bike trails downtown, they are dying due to disease and exposure, and we, as an intelligent and compassionate people, and as leaders, not to lead but from behind, but to lead from ahead, we need to create not just a mitigation, but a solution. These are your sons and daughters, your granddaughters and grandchildren, and the compassion requirement is able to be met by you, and I appreciate your hearts and what you're already doing in this city. God bless you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item? If you please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. Hey, thanks for the time. I'm Lawrence Crabtree, Forest Supervisor, El Dorado National Forest. I've been working for the Forest Service since 1969, currently the Forest Supervisor here for the last six years. I just wanted to briefly update the council on some changes surrounding the national forest. We're an organization with a long history, and we are an organization that finds change difficult. Part of my job is to lead change. We're looking at some changes primarily in the way to face the future with a different kind of workforce, with a smaller workforce. And as a reminder, you know, I'm part of the Department of Agriculture, which is part of the executive branch in this country, so there's some strong interest in the Trump administration and what the forest produces. This forest is expected to produce timber, and that's what we're doing right now. In some cases this summer, you may see a load of logs coming off the forest every few minutes down Highway 50. And so, what those loads of logs are is jobs, a healthier forest left behind, their thinning projects, and they are building materials. People build homes out of wood in this country. And so, that's really what my job is focused on. But we are faced with trying to reconfigure our organization, combining the Pacific Ranger District with the Placerville Ranger District, having one contact place on Highway 50 for the public. I looked at Pacific and been concerned about it for years, where people turn across two lanes of Highway 50 to approach our, to enter our ranger station, have been really concerned about that, and that's changing now. The public contacts the public exit 54 on Highway 50, where there is a safe way to get in and off of that freeway. So, that's a change. We are changing, trying to reduce the amount of people we have. I like to tell people I don't borrow money, and I don't print money, and I only spend the money that I have, and that's a limitation, even though it's a big forest and 500,000 acres, 350 employees, a budget that's a little over $30 million. So, it's a fairly big operation, but it's all, it's all now about partnerships. So, it's not about us hiring more people, it's about us working with partners. This forest has more partners, I think, than any forest in this state. We have partners with CalFire, PG&E, SMD, EID, the Wild Turkey Federation, the Mule Deer Foundation, the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, and millions of dollars are coming into this forest from outside the congressional appropriations, which is really how I have to operate. So, really proud of a lot of things we're doing. I, see, I've got about 20 seconds left, and I feel bad that I haven't been here sooner or more often to talk about the Forest Service. We've got a lot of great stories to tell, I think, and I just wanted to say I have an open-door policy. I've had some people from the council, I think the former mayor, visit with me a couple of times, so I'm available to this community to talk about the things that are going on in the forest.
Mr. Crabtree, I think we would welcome having you back in an arranged time, so that you can have an adequate amount of time, bring some information with you, because I know we are concerned about the staffing levels and the protect, the ability to protect all 500,000 of those acres. So, if you would be amenable to that?
For sure.
We'll make that happen in the very near future.
Yep, and I just need to say, I brought my wife here, there's four generations of our family in these communities, so you're looking at somebody who has a vested interest in maximizing fuel treatment and fire protection in these communities, and somebody with a 50-year history of firefighting, so I have a pretty strong background in knowing what we need to do.
We would welcome having you back, then. We'll make that, I'll have the city manager get in touch with you.
Okay.
Great, thank you for coming this evening. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Arnie Johnson, I'm a citizen of Placerville and also an educator. I wanted to read something that I found in the Democrat, a letter to the editor, kind of relates to what I was talking about, the homeless situation at the last city council meeting. And it's in regards to juvenile hall that's been abandoned, just across from the sheriff's building, nestled near the Superior Municipal Courts, half a block from the library, which would be a perfect house for the homeless. Location, location, of course, location. The juvenile hall location is far from residents and family neighborhoods, and would provide a home for those who would appreciate it, to the line, and contribute a small portion of their time for shelter, warmth, food, and a sense of belonging, which is essential to their lives. It wouldn't be a crash pad, or a drug den, or Lederer's Park. Those type of individuals would be identified, removed, and gone. There's two solutions. You have to look at the long term, where people that really need help, and a place where people just need to live and don't want the help. Winter's coming, the homeless are swarming, shopping centers, bike trails downtown, they're dying due to disease, exposure, and we, as an intelligent people, need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council this evening on a non-agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. How are you today?
Good, thank you, sir.
I was just going to make it short, I just want to let you know that I'm reviewing the El Dorado County Transportation Commission Board and the Administrative Office of all the money going on in El Dorado County, so you know that we're going to have an in-depth investigation for you, ready for you soon, to let who the bad seeds and the good seeds are on this board right here. I already have, I can tell you who you are, but I'll leave that to a later date. It's all over the county, and I just wanted you to know that we're coming full strong, and, yeah, I usually get up here like this to talk, this is not my forte, but I'm just testing the water right now, so that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on an open forum? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close, open comment. Cleve, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on a couple of the issues that were brought up, and that was the mention of the juvenile hall and the armory. We've been working with the county on that for, on and off, for quite a while. The armory belongs to the state of California, and it has been in a frozen status. The governor's, one of Governor Newsom's first orders was to freeze all surplus state property, which included that site. I believe it just is in the process of being unfrozen, if you will.
Yeah, they released a report, the state did recently, and they identified surplus properties that they identified as being possibly suitable for affordable housing, as I believe is the way it was termed. And that was one of the sites, the armory was identified in that, in that map that was sent out.
Okay, so unfortunately, here we are in the ninth month of the year, and due to the governor's office, that site has not been in, to be considered. It would be foolish to spend time on something that the state mayor may not let us have. Now, they are leaning towards affordable housing. Correct? And then as regarding the juvenile hall, which is an old facility, but we're all very familiar with it, and it is in an interesting and useful location, that belongs to the county.
To the county.
And we have been in discussions with them for probably four months? Maybe three months?
Well, most recently, yeah.
Yeah.
We had those discussions since the juvenile hall became vacant, which was about three months ago, Chief, right? So.
So, we have to work with them as the landowner and the facility owner, and of course, they have a fleet of attorneys and risk folks that are looking at the reuse of that structure and making sure that it makes sense for a county facility.
I heard they've already, they've got some ideas for their use of it, so.
Right, yeah, so I'm just, just so the public does know.
Right.
We are, we would have been working on the armory, but we can't, and we are working with the county on the juvenile hall. These things take time, unfortunately. The other, the other comment regarding our $22 million budget, I don't think it would be fair if I didn't defend staff, all of our staff, and my fellow council members, to say that we probably had $25 or $26 million proposed when we started our last budget around, and we had to leave all of that on the floor, and those were additional policemen, those were additional public works members, those were new pipes, new roads, or not new roads, but repairing more roads, additional staff to do code enforcement work. So, while we do have a $22 million, and that does sound like we have a lot, there isn't a penny in that budget to spare. So, we will continue to do our very best, and I want to thank the staff for finding a way to cut almost $4 million and still provide services to the city on a 24-hour-a-day basis, seven days a week. So, it just doesn't seem fair to throw that out there and not realize what that $22 million really did represent. Yeah, it's a lot of money, but it's not near enough. So, with that, I will move on. Unless you have anything else.
I was just going to mention, I'm going to look at my finance director. True, it's $22 million, but discretionary that you could really consider doing something with is only about eight, Dave, general fund budget?
That's correct.
So, so really, all we're talking about is $8 million, not $22 million.
I know, every time I hear $22 million, I'm going well. Wish we did have it.
Just one other comment, too, to clarify, there is actually no state mandate for local governments to provide homeless shelters. There's an incentivized program, if you will, in terms of potential dollars from the state that's been allocated in the budget, like matching dollars, things like that, but there is no actual state mandate for local governments to provide shelters.
Thank you. But we continue to work with the communities the best we can, and it's got to be a collaborative effort. This little city's not going to do it on its own, but we will be there to do it. All right, moving on to consent calendar. Consent calendar is considered, can be considered under one motion unless there's a member of the council that wishes to have an item removed for further discussion? Is there any items that a council member wishes to have removed this evening? Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Does someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It moved in second, and roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Tara, I'm sorry, Councilmember Taylor, excuse me?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moves us on to, we have no ordinances or public hearings this evening, so this brings us right to item 12.1, a presentation of the historic City Hall reuse proposal by Arts and Culture El Dorado, with review, discussion, and possible action to proceed with lease negotiations. Mr. Zeller, I believe you have the staff report?
That's correct, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, we have Terry Lamontec, who represents Arts and Culture El Dorado, and she's prepared to provide a presentation for the council, and this is a presentation that is based upon the submittal that was received on July 31st, as the revised RFP for the historic reuse of City Hall. And I'll let, I'm going to introduce Terry and give her the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Good evening, Terry.
Good evening.
If you could introduce yourself for our audience, please.
Thank you. Terry Lamontec, Director of Arts and Culture El Dorado. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and city staff, for the opportunity to be here again this Very happy to be telling you about our proposal for the reuse of Old City Hall, Confidence, and Immigrant Jane. So, you've heard it from me before, but it bears repeating, because not everyone is exactly on board yet. We do have a new name, Arts and Culture El Dorado, which we adopted to really embrace our understanding of what arts and culture are in the county. They go hand in hand, and we really feel that the culture of the county is what really makes it a special and unique place, and we wanted our name and our new logo to reflect So, the genesis of this project, how we really got started thinking about a cultural district in Placerville, was that in April of 2017, we completed our cultural master plan, and it was the result of an 18-month process in which we, our consultant, reviewed numerous reports, maps. reports, maps, plans, and other foundational documents, did over 100 interviews throughout the community, and looked at cultural assets throughout the county. And the report contains 22 recommendations for programs and proposed partnerships. The report is available on our website under About, and I also have hard copies. There are copies in the library as well for anyone who wants to review it in print. So one of the things that came out as a result of conversations with community leaders and city staff was that there were civic assets that essentially needed help, primarily Confidence and Immigrant Jane. And at the time, the courthouse was under consideration. We know it's on hold at the moment, but it really gave the team working on this plan the opportunity to think about all of the benefits that a vibrant cultural district could bring to downtown Placerville. And so we created a roadmap for this cultural district in this early thinking, which would become a space for visual and performing arts, a cultural community center, residential apartments for artists, an arts flex space, offices for our organization, and a sort of unique arts ag building. And that this timeline was actually, you know, all of this is an organic process, and the timeline was really accelerated when the district attorney moved out of the historic post office building. The request for proposal asked that we address whether we would propose using one or both buildings. So our proposal for adaptive reuse of Old City Hall involves considering both buildings as one concept. And there they are. So this is a concept drawing of the ground floors of Confidence and Immigrant Jane. So... Is my pointer working? Doesn't look like it. Dave, can you give me a hand? You showed me a minute ago. Isn't it the middle button? Okay. So I'll use my invisible pointer to show you, and, you know, many of you have seen this before, so I'll just walk you through it. The lower portion of the floor plan shows Confidence Hall as we envision it as becoming our gallery space, also a place for small performances. The north end of Immigrant Jane becomes offices for Arts and Culture Eldorado, and the south end of Jane becomes a flexible space for cultural activities. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the gallery space and its use as a space for rotating exhibitions. I have heard on a couple of occasions since we started talking about this project, why do we need another gallery on Main Street? And as the arts organization for the county, of course, we support our retail galleries on Main Street and throughout the rest of the county. So I'd really like you, the council, the public who is here, and people watching at home, to hear a little bit more about what we really do in our gallery in terms of our rotating exhibitions, because they really tell a story about what's special about Eldorado County. Here comes Dave, hopefully with a battery. Thank you. No pressure. Is this a new? Okay, that's okay. Let's see, we were... So I'm just, I would just like to take you through the exhibitions that we have had, both at the Fausel House Gallery and some at the Confidence Gallery. The first show that we did at Fausel House was called Back to the Future. It was an exhibition of classic automotive design art, you know? There are a lot of classic cars in Placerville, and it was a great, it was a hit. We had a great attendance at that show. I think many of you are familiar with the exhibition we did in partnership with Wakamatsu Farm called T-Silt Gold. Many of our exhibitions are in partnership with a local agency or another nonprofit. We recently showed the work of contemporary Native American artists that was called Connected. Dave? Can you make it so the thumbnails go away? The show we have on right now, and there's still time to see it, it's a wonderful show called Convoy 1919. You probably saw in the paper the story that in 1919, the Army organized, it was a bit of a publicity stunt, a convoy, military convoy to come clear across the country on the Lincoln Highway. They came through Placerville, and right now in our gallery, we have an exhibition of photographs and documents and a wonderful silent film celebrating this journey. They came over the Sierra and through Placerville on their way to San Francisco. Another sort of story combining history, geology, and photography, Deep Blue Lead, starring our own George Wielden. This was a show called Native Roots, an exhibition of botanical art of plants that are native to Eldorado County that also are endangered. It was a three-way partnership, including a special tour of Pine Hill Preserve. Resilience was the exhibition as a result of our artist residency at the Institute of Forest Genetics, also in partnership with Independence High School. This was one of my personal favorites. The Games of Winter celebrated the fact, little-known fact, I didn't even know it until I moved here, that the Winter Olympics in 1964, thank you, were in, well, I knew they were in Squaw Valley, but what I didn't know is that some of the events were held right here in Eldorado County. So we borrowed objects and ephemera from the little museum up in Squaw. Wildcraft, handmade works from Eldorado artisans. Out there was an exhibition of astronomical photography in partnership with the observatory at the college. Take Me to the Apple Breeder, we timed to coincide with apple hill season. It was photographs and ceramics from a very important artist who has researched apple breeding. So the space at Confidence Lab will also house small performances, pop-ups, and talks, and other community activities. So I also wanted to give a sense of those. We have done, already at Confidence, we've done workshops and classes. Look at that handsome fellow. We participated in Winderlust. That's Andrew on the right portraying a snake oil salesman. We have had exhibitions and performances of student work, Waldorf School on the left there, and Eldorado High School's theater program on the right. As part of our Connected show, we had a Native American artist discussion group. We have fun, lively gallery opening receptions. We always have a featured local winery and great food. There's George at the top of the screen. We do talks and lectures. That one happened to be at our old location. On the lower left, you see an Ikebana demonstration that was part of T-Silt Gold. We've done outside theatrical presentations at Confidence from touring groups and small theater company in Tahoe. I love this picture. There's the, there's the notification of the convoy show on the Placerville hardware billboard for all of Highway 50 to see. So we think of Confidence primarily as the firehouse, and it's everyone's sort of favorite iteration of the building, but it's really had a lot of other incarnations over the years, as you can see. It's been a roller skating rink, a dance hall, a venue for the county fair. They've had wrestling matches, religious services. The militia had its armory there at one point. There have been meetings of service organizations, concerts, the city library was there, of course, and the Placerville city offices. There's Ah Wing from Auburn, the Chinese pugilist who was part of the, who had his wrestling match at Confidence. And there on the right, you see the poster for the local Rebecca's group who had meetings at Confidence Hall. There's the militia marching down Main Street whose armory was housed at Confidence. Whoops. Anybody recognize that guy? If Chris Payne was here, he would know who it was. Chris, are you here? No? John Dench was a famous local Denizen. His funeral was at Confidence Hall. He was a beloved member of the community. In the 1800s, he operated a saddle-making shop in the building that now houses the bookery. He was a co-founder of the Hattie Mine in 1888, the mine that is now the centerpiece of Gold Bug Park. And I thought this was so interesting. In the Mountain Democrat, in a story in 1954, Confidence Hall was described as being, quote, "the center of social life in the community for many years." So we are very proud to think of Confidence, to think of its next chapter in its life as continuing to be that important community hub. Immigrant Jane, over the years, I don't have as much information on this building as I do on Confidence Hall, but as you can see, it's been part of the city hall and library, the police station, real estate company, a title company, and apartments. In 1876, the building was sold to Joseph Rolari, an early resident of Eldorado County. During its long history, Immigrant Jane has seen a variety of commercial uses, and its upper floor was, for an extended period, used as a residential apartment, accessed by stairs on the building's east side. You see them there. One of the long-term residents was the daughter of Joseph Rolari, Mrs. Sarah Cilio, whose nephew recently told us about climbing the stairs to visit his aunt when she lived up there. The Cilio family, by the way, also provided some of the images for the convoy show. So, you know, all the threads weave together, but there were apartments up there. Look, it wasn't always ketchup and mustard. My husband found this on eBay. It's a postcard from 1954. Anyway, I thought that was pretty fascinating. Maybe we can get everyone used to Confidence and Immigrant Jane and get away from ketchup and mustard. I've heard that, too. This is a little graphic illustration of the exhibition and performance activity that we have had in the two previous years when we were at the Fausel House. The red dots just simply signify an exhibition or performance, day, evening, or both. So you can see that there was something happening almost every day, which will be virtually the same at Confidence and in the Flex Space. So here's a shot of Confidence as we envision it. It's 1,100 square feet of open gallery space. We are considering movable walls, which can be stored in that storage area you see in the upper left-hand corner. The space is completely flexible and lends itself well to exhibitions and performances. So I want to talk a little bit more, too, about what we're calling the Arts Flex Space. At the north end of Immigrant Jane, we're proposing a 477-square-foot flexible space to be used for all these various community activities, such as book club readings, workshops, focus groups, rehearsals. And I remember at one point during a presentation, someone commented that, oh, it's only the size of a two-car garage. Well, if you know anything about the arts, the arts can do a lot in a two-car garage. And so I wanted to show you, I'll come back to that, the Flex Space in different configurations. I wish I had my pointer, because I want to demonstrate that there's a door to the outside, so it can be used on evenings and weekends. There's a door to the, it has a dedicated restroom, and it can be used if someone were in there in the evening. Is that you, Dave? Thank you. My ghost pointer. The point is, it's a flexible space that can be configured for many different uses. So here it is configured for a lecture or film screening. Here it is configured for a workshop or conference. And I'm gonna go back to this slide. So we have developed over the last year an arts incubator. Mayor Acuna alluded to Save the Graves. There it is, right in the middle on the top. It is a program that nurtures and incubates small organizations who may or may not wish to become a nonprofit, but who have a cultural purpose that serves the public good. And the programs in our incubator, we have two more actually coming up, will be a great, the Flex Space will be a wonderful use for them, where they can have meetings and, as I say, rehearsals and various other activities. It's just the right size for small organizations to take advantage of. The other end, the, would be the east end of Jane, becomes Arts and Culture Eldorado Offices. I think that many of you are familiar with the programs and services that we offer, many of which, I would go so far as to say, most of which are done out in the community, throughout the county, in every supervisory district. Programs for veterans, programs for young people, programs in schools. This year, we produced our first film series, poetry programs, artist residencies, and a variety of other services that are still in development. Whoops. So there's the footprint of our offices. You see on the left end, the office break room and a riser room, which connects really to the Flex Space. It's that extension off of the end of Immigrant Jane, but that's the footprint for the offices. So here's one last look at the total concept for the first floor of Confidence and Jane. The Flex Space, the gallery, and the offices. The second floor of both buildings will become artist studio apartments. Residents of these live workspaces will take shifts as gallery attendants in the Confidence Lab gallery downstairs, so it really becomes a collective sort of hive of creative activity. And this, I really want to stress this point, because everything in this proposal speaks to revenue sustainability and a solid operating plan. The rent from the apartments creates a maintenance fund for the buildings. The rent from the apartments goes, sometimes I say it goes straight to Cleve, of course, not literally. It goes straight to the city to create a maintenance fund for the buildings. Here's a layout of the apartments. There are four of them. This is a somewhat preliminary concept floor plan. We will need to put an elevator in. We are asked to speak to the historic character of the buildings. In our plan, the historic exterior character of the buildings will remain the same, as iconic elements of Main Street, bringing them back into contemporary use and allowing them to become a vibrant part of the daily lives of our community. To date, we have concentrated on reviewing the conditions of the buildings, developing the program... the program requirements, and the cost estimates. We looked at structural, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical considerations, and our architectural firm was in agreement with the recommendation in the Burn Engineering Report to rehab and strengthen existing masonry walls. Everybody knows it's impossible to predict what conditions will be found once the changes are underway. We'd need an elevator for ADA access, ADA upgrades are needed on the first level, structural upgrades would need to be incorporated, new walls and finishes, and we have consulted the Architectural Review and Environmental Compliance Unit of the California Office of Historic Preservation, and they have confirmed that nothing in our plan would jeopardize the historic designation of the buildings. And I want to emphasize to members of the council and the public that historic preservation, you may have heard me say this before, it's in our DNA as a cultural organization. Historic preservation is part of our culture, and we will do everything that we can to support and protect that. And our architect, architectural firm, Architectural Nexus, has strong experience in working with cultural spaces that are on the National Register. For example, they recently completed a major renovation of Sacramento Memorial Auditorium, which is itself on the National Register. The RFP asks us to address the business climate in downtown Placerville. As you know, this proposal represents Phase 1 of a potential cultural district on Main Street, and as we say in our proposal, the cultural connectivity created by the activities in Confidence and Immigrant Jane, and indeed potentially an entire district, will attract residents and visitors daytime and evening, weekdays and weekends. And in our proposal is a listing of the numerous zip codes that we have collected from around the region, the state, other states, Canada, and Mexico. Okay. Financial plan, there's a number of questions about the financial plan and building ownership. So the current cost estimate for restoration and upgrades to Confidence and Jane is $3.6 million, and this includes architectural design, civil and site design, structural, mechanical, plumbing and fire suppression, electrical improvements, and tenant improvements. The Capital Campaign is in development. As a nonprofit, we are able to raise money from many sources, including foundations, corporations, individuals, and government entities. David Gerard will serve as our campaign chair, and all funds raised during the Capital Campaign will go to the community foundation and will be restricted to project costs. Here's our timeline. About two years, beginning upon selection, the build timeline is about a year. But I'd like to point out that if we can do the renovations in phases, the timelines could overlap, and I'm not an architect, but if we could start with the apartments, we could get that revenue stream generated as quickly as possible, that would be a priority As I mentioned, one of our highest priorities has been to create a dedicated, ongoing revenue stream that would go directly to the city to establish and replenish a maintenance fund for these buildings. The funds will derive from the rent from the upstairs apartments, rent paid by Arts and Culture El Dorado, and 50% of revenue generated by outside users of Confidence and the Flex Space. Arts and Culture El Dorado will operate and manage both buildings, and our current staff and operating budget are sufficient to cover operations, and there will be a budget offset created by the artist residence serving as gallery attendants. City of Placerville will continue to own the buildings, they're city treasures, and that's how they will stay. And I would also like to point out that as we developed the operating plan and the program plan for these buildings, we considered the guiding principles that were developed for the Courthouse Blue Ribbon Committee. And these include preservation of historic elements of the buildings, relevant use as a vibrant presence that will enhance downtown and serve the Placerville community, and sustainability in implementation, operations, and maintenance. As you know, Arts and Culture El Dorado has been awarded a grant in the amount of $100,000 to support community engagement and schematic design, as we, as a community, consider a cultural district in downtown Placerville. And I would just like to let you know that only 57 creative placemaking projects around the country received this recognition, and of these, only 15 were awarded $100,000 or above. And so with this award, we join the cities of New York, Phoenix, Reno, Detroit, Savannah, Georgia, Pittsburgh, Washington DC, Baltimore, and New Orleans. We've also received $5,000 from California Arts Council for the same purpose, and I tell you this because I'm just terribly proud of this award from the National Endowment. These are really some of the most exciting and creative placemaking projects in the country. It's just tremendous that Placerville will be in that cohort. That's it. That's my presentation. I'm sure you have questions, which I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Terry. We appreciate your-
You're welcome.
-your presentation this evening. Let me get a couple of things clarified with Cleve so that we stay on track for what our goal is here this evening. First of all, a housekeeping item, and that would be the letter that we received from the tribe concerning the FPPC complaint, and perhaps you can explain why we have chosen to go ahead and move ahead this evening with this as scheduled? Are you or Mr. Driscoll?
Well, I can start, and then John can add to this. Two things. First of all, we received the email stating that there has been a complaint filed with the FPPC. We don't know what that complaint consists of. We were not given a copy. Last time when this happened, we did receive correspondence from the FPPC stating that a complaint had been filed. We have not received anything like that this time. Second, if there is any type of violation, which we don't believe there is, you would not, it would not affect anything you were doing tonight. Where it would actually come into play is when you decide, if you decide, to actually award a contract to the Arts Council. The action before you tonight is recommended to, if you want to proceed, that you can let staff know and award that, the proposal to El Dorado Arts Council, but then direct us to go back and negotiate a contract. So there's nothing official in place until that contract is actually approved, which we suspect will take a little bit of time for negotiation and to get through that process, which if there is a complaint filed with the FPPC, we think that that will be resolved before that contract would come back to you. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, with Terry having just completed her presentation, I would like to ask council members to, if they have any specific questions in what she has just presented and proposed.
I have one question about, concerning the revenue.
Yes.
Would you, because you keep calling it maintenance, but you are going to charge the artists a portion of their rent? Who live, who are in the, how is that going to work?
So, since the city will be the building owner, essentially the landlord, the rent will simply go right to the city.
But the rent, I mean, the artists are going to pay rent?
To the city.
Correct?
To the city.
Right. And, but, and then they're also going to help with the, how the building is run?
Yes. The idea is that they would take shifts as gallery attendants downstairs, as part of their ability to be in the building.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make it clear that-
Have I clarified it?
Yes.
For you?
Yeah. Because before, it kind of, nothing was mentioned about rent. It was about maintenance, and I don't think it was pretty, you know, that it was as clear as what that was all about.
The rent becomes the maintenance fund.
Right. Yeah. I think we just need to establish that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Karen, did you have any questions for where we are at this point?
Sure. What is the amount that you expect that the city will receive from rent?
It's in the proposal, I think it's around, well, today, around $4,200 a month. You know, two, three years from now, we have to see what current market rates would be like. We can only go by today.
Okay. Thanks.
There, in the proposal also is, if we were asked to do a five-year cash flow projection on revenue and expenditure, and that's in the proposal as well with those figures specified.
All right. Other council members?
Just maybe this is a more question for Cleve or John, and that is, can you condition the rental of an apartment based solely on your employment at a location? I was wondering if that opens up the, you know, we have to rent to anybody that puts forward an application to live there. Because I love the idea, I just want to make sure we're in solid legal ground.
That's a good question.
That's a good question, and there are some issues there, but I think under the circumstances, it's probably doable, but I certainly would want to research that to make sure that that opinion is correct.
Thank you. Dennis?
I have one more question.
Oh, great. Go ahead, Karen.
And Arts and Culture would be the one screening tenants and kind of going through that whole process, so the city wouldn't have any part of that?
That's our proposal at this point, yes. You know, we look forward to a long-term partnership with the city, and that will involve everybody putting their wishes and needs and preferences on the table, and so that we all get, you know, the best outcome. We're flexible on many things, so this is, it feels like I've been talking about this for a long time, but it's still very preliminary.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, I could just imagine a lot of this is going to get worked out in the negotiations, and, you know, much of what we see today may be different depending on how those go. So I don't want to get too caught up in these, the nuances of the contract, more about you as a partner and Arts and Culture as a partner with the City of Placerville, at least from my perspective. Thank you.
Terry, did you have any last comments before I move on to the next part of this item?
Other than to address what Vice Mayor Sarah Gosa alluded to in terms of artists, I am far from an expert on this kind of thing, but I know that there are buildings and projects that are artist lofts, there are artist residences. There's a big one right in Sacramento, so I know that it's doable, just on a very basic level.
Santa Ana has one, that's the same, yep. All right. Well, thank you.
Any further questions for me?
Not right now. We will probably ask you to come back up in a little bit. We'll have some more questions, I'm sure. So the goal this evening is to have the council ask their questions of the applicant, review this as a, if, decide if this is a viable project and a partnership that we want to move forward with, and have staff go back and work on that actual negotiations. And it is on just this project this evening. This is the one and only final applicant. So with that, I will go ahead and open public comment on this item. Ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there a member of the public that would like to address the council on this? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you so much, everyone. I have such tremendous-
Could you step up to the microphone for-
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I have such tremendous respect for the work you all do, and it is a privilege to briefly express and relate my wholehearted support for Arts and Culture of El Dorado with this particular project. I just want to briefly point out that when, in a project like this and these, when you bring art to a community, you open the eyes to the people of that community, and when you open their eyes to the culture and the color, you give them something to talk about and something to relate to, and you give them something to stop and discuss. And when you do that in a town as quaint and as wonderful as ours, you give them opportunities to sit down and further stimulate the economy, for lack of a better phrase. I also want to point out that the mature and responsible work that Arts and Culture of El Dorado has done since Terry and Andrew and all the others involved, they've brought, again, responsible and mature efforts in the arts to this town. For example, Convoy 1919 is, was a project, or is a project, that gave a wider range of audience than is typically found in arts, in communities. You have, you gave people with a sense of their own history, their own Americanness, that gave them something to come here and celebrate. Native roots gave another group of mature, responsible community members an opportunity to come and take note of the native species and plants that exist in this community and have always existed here. Wildcraft gave responsible artists, like myself, a chance to show and promote the work that they make, that we make, with love and with care in this community. And Take Me to the Apple Breeder is another example of bringing outside efforts from outside communities to this one, enabling ours to grow just that much more. As a resident and homeowner in Diamond Springs, I want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to relate to you my confidence in this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 12.1? Please come forward, if you wouldn't mind stating your name so we all know who you are.
My name is Jonathan Gainesborough. I am an artist. I am the author of seven books, musician-composer. My daughter has a master's degree in flute, and my son-in-law has a master's in voice, which is, his voice is like a cello. They both teach music in Colorado. But I just want to encourage the council that everything you can do to make this happen, make it happen. God bless you.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Laurel Brumpf, I'm Chamber of Commerce. We have testified previously to our support for this project. The Arts and Culture of El Dorado have done amazing things to bring arts and culture to the forefront in El Dorado County. When you look at what attracts visitors to El Dorado County, history, adventure, arts is right up there in the top amongst many other things. So the vision of this project and the opportunity that it's going to bring for the future just is very exciting, and we wholeheartedly support and suggest that you also support this project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another, excuse me, another member of the public wishing to address the council Good evening.
Hi there, Jennifer Chapman, Placerville resident. I will say, I do have an extensive art background as well. I do have two degrees in art, but that was before I did natural resources and ended up on this path. But I just, I guess I just want to say, I mean, I think the Arts Council, or, excuse me, Arts and Culture, is doing great things. I just think there's this incredible opportunity with these historic buildings to really focus on historic resources and have arts as well, you know, on Main Street. I just, I think it's really sad, you know, when they're saying how, I mean, Terry just made this statement about we, they tell a story about what is special about El Dorado County, talking about, you know, arts and performances and these different things that are going on, but the actual historic resources are the story themselves. And, I mean, you know, you've got, you know, you've got a firehouse, you've got the bell tower, you've got fire issues all around us. We have this incredible fire education opportunity with just that one piece of things. There is an incre, I mean, there is an incredible mural, you know, a WPA 1940 mural wasn't even mentioned, in the post office, amazing piece of art and piece of history- and, you know, it's an amazing, you know, piece. And Sue will talk more about this. I think they've put together a concept for the post office as well that is actually more of a natural resources museum to talk about. That mural is called Forest Genetics, and it's actually about logging. It's kind of speaks to some of the traditional, you know, forest use that Lawrence was talking about. I mean, you had fire in the Cary House, you know, the Cary House where the Pony Express, you know, started, stage goes, all this, all this stuff, and it's like, how are we going to pull all that together? I mean, I appreciate all the art stuff, I love art. I live, I see art almost every, you know, I go and see a lot of art all the time in multiple cities, multiple places. Anyway, I'm just saying, I think it can all be here, but I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to take more opportunity to just celebrate what those buildings were really about. I mean, originally, why they are there. And I guess I'll just remind you, because I know Kara was impressed when you guys got a letter from Bill Tuika, he actually worked for the city of San Rafael and retired from the city of Vallejo, and he's a Napa resident now, and he's on the Napa Landmarks Board of Directors, and he sent a letter in support of the other proposal, and, you know, I would just encourage you to go back to that letter. There, he's working, for instance, on a big campaign to try to preserve the historic post office in Napa, which has some parallels to this one, it's the same era of post offices. Anyway, I would just really say, why can't we do all these things? And, you know, again, take a hard look at how to best appreciate and speak to those resources, you know, that are from the eighteen hundreds and other periods, you know, that kind of go through kind of our sequence of events, that is really from the discovery of gold through the nineteen forties, when there was an end of nonessential gold mining to support the war effort. We have this incredible sequence of events, and we can tell that story, as well as have art and performance and all these other things. I loved what they did, you know, the Arts Council did great things with the, that Wakamatsu play was amazing. Thank you, Terry and Arts Council, Arts and Culture El Dorado, because that was an amazing, beautiful thing, a gift really to the world, and that's a national historic landmark that ties with our historic resources right here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening, Sue.
Sue Taylor. I agree with what Jennifer just said, and I appreciate that. I had to kind of soak in where to go from here, because it's, you know, I feel like there's been a constant battle with the city council in trying to preserve some history in our town, especially when this is such a significant place for how we change the world. And the problem that I've had with this process is that they're looking at, when you say placemaking, that means changing culture. Everything's focused on changing the culture, investing who we are and then, you know, creating one. And we are so rich of history and culture that is being ignored, or actually, I feel destroyed, and those are my concerns. There was a couple of things that, well, they changed the wording a little bit of what, how the historical things were protected, but according to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, I'll just read two of them. A property shall be used for its historic purpose or to be placed in a new use that requires minimal change to the defining characteristics of the building and its site and environment. That means, if you look at the plan, they're completely changing everything around these buildings and within these buildings. It doesn't follow this standards. And number two, the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. The removal of historic materials or alterations or features in spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided, shall means they have to be. If you're going to change these things, it's going to require CEQA and NEPA, because there's federal funding that's involved, and you need to be aware of that. There's, it just seems like there's no intention to align or reach out to the historical culture that exists within this community. And that's been my concern through this whole process. I love art, I've done art, I have, you know, part of being in art, doing the buildings that I do has to do with art. I would love to work with the Arts Council and be compatible, but instead, it's like this competition, and I think it's really sad that it's geared to almost destroy that, which we love so much. So my other issue is this building, according to three engineering reports, is not even safe to inhabit. There wasn't a lot of discussion, there was three different alternatives of how to fix the building, I don't, didn't hear, all I heard was they're going to retain the front, and the rest gets pretty much destroyed and rebuilt. That is a huge endeavor, that's going to cause, that's where you're going to have to go through CEQA, NEPA. Right now, the wall is Boeing, and you don't have a positive connection in the second floor and the roof, so I don't even know why you're allowing people in the building at this time, and no one will address that. It's like you ignore that, there's no problem, move on. So this is, I don't know what the rush is to change the culture of our town, and I really like to reverse this and work together with all the communities. We had sixteen organizations when I tried to, the, a lot of these organizations tried to help the Nissan to have a place, the PDA wanted a place, the marshals wanted a place, the fire station's been looking for that place. There's only one of these historic, this is probably one of the oldest, if not the second oldest, fire station, and when you talked about all the events that happened, there was a huge annex on the back of this that went across the back where the freeway was.
Sue, can you wrap up your comments?
I'll wrap it up, thank you. So lastly, I just ask to reject the proposal to gut out these buildings. A lot of this, what they're proposing is grant-driven, it's what the grant requires, the, and is it, I need to know also, okay, two more points. If, a lot of this took place before anyone knew this was going to happen, the alliance with the city, creating this culture packet study, which I think it was contingent on the city providing free rent, because they had to do a matching grant. So I'd like to know if that's true, and if that's part of this. And then, lastly, when I leave, there's a, there's a statement in your general, in your thing that you're not supposed to be derogatory. I object to the object, but please don't attack my person, my property, or my family when I'm done, and just keep the comments that you speak to the issue, and not derogatory towards. Every time I come here, I get sick to my stomach, because I'm waiting for the fallout of people criticizing me, my family, and what we've done personally, so I appreciate. One last question.
Sue, you're way over time.
I know I am, but there's so many issues. I've spent thousands, hundreds of hours trying to, and I've given you documentation to do things, but I just ask for a few more minutes.
Nope.
When, when, not, I mean, one last question, one question I need to know. When they denied the extension for the tribe to be able to perform, one of the council members said, we wouldn't want to work with these people, you know, these people. Who are these people that I'm wondering when that was mentioned?
That is not a relevant question to the twelve point one item.
It is, if you've already made your mind not to.
Thank you very much. You probably took double the time of any other speaker. Having seen this fester in this community for so many years, I know I have audience members that are angry that I didn't just shut the microphone off two or three minutes ago. I am trying to do my best with as many hours as I can get out of, out of this day and a week, to try and heal this issue, and try, and so that was one reason why I let Sue go on probably double the amount of time, because I want her to feel like she was heard. I think she got off track, and her comments were not focused to the item that's before the council this evening. We have gone through that process. We are here with a proposal. So I will invite the next speaker to please come forward, and if you would, limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Wolf. I have no responsibility here whatsoever. Unfortunately, Mike, I'll use half the time, if that much. The, I don't, I, I'm here in support of the project. Is it a perfect project? I don't think so, but it's a good project. And this is one of those situations, we've been at this for so long, we don't want perfection to be the enemy of good, and then also in the spirit of, you know, we've worked at this one way or another for many, many years. I mean, I moved here thirty-two years ago, and twenty-five years ago started coming to these kind of meetings and discussions. So here we are, all this time later, and I would just suggest and recommend to the council that you make a decision in favor of the project, and you know eventually you're going to make the decision better. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Hi, I'm John Clarici, I am a citizen of Placerville. I cannot draw stick figures, and I make no claims to being an artist or even knowing much about it. I am a sustaining member, though, of both the DeYoung Museums and the Crocker Museum. I like going to the exhibits at this one just as much as some of those highfalutin things that Yvette and I go down to in the city. They provide us with a change of pace, a different perspective, sometimes interesting information about the community that you didn't even know. Point of fact, there is only one application on the table right now, as we all know. There is no other application to consider. You can only, by your own rules, consider this one. I think it's interesting that once again, they, they drop a thing on your desk at three thirty-five this afternoon. It's a delaying tactic, don't let them get away with it. That is their stock in trade, when they cannot move public opinion, when they cannot get their act together enough to get their application in on time, when they cannot hit their marks and say their lines, what they rely on is delay and muddying the waters. They've done it too much in this project. I'm going to try to get this right. Arts and Culture have gotten an application in, it makes sense, it has something that you can actually speak to, it has a plan. I feel confident that they can get their plan done. The, when we saw what was coming out of the other side, as I mentioned before when I stood here, it provided no confidence in that. And tonight's actions, and tonight's comments, and tonight's everything is what, the absolute opposite of what Councilmember Taylor said. Own it, own what you've done. That was almost the perfect thing to say. These folks have integrity, they've been good to the process, they've given you the information you need, quit mucking around with it. Give them the go-ahead to negotiate a contract. As a resident of this city, I am in favor of this wholeheartedly. Don't let them get away with what they always do, and that is delay. Thank you very much. You see, fifty-five seconds left.
Thank you, sir. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on twelve point one? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and members of the council. Kathy Lishman. Since people are giving their credentials, I'll say that I have a degree in music and drama, and that I taught at Gold Trail School, Sutter's Mill School, and, and every year we'd bring the second and third graders into Placerville to study history, go to Goldbug Park. We used to take them up to Old City Hall. So I love history, I love this town, and I love the arts. The El Dorado Arts Council, now called Arts and Culture, has been around for about thirty-five years. They've been downtown, an integral part of our downtown for many years. I know of three different locations they were in, and I don't even know how long they've been in town, but they have a proven track record. They have the ability to get the funding to do this, and they have a plan for how it can be maintained, and it would be an asset to the community. The idea of a cultural arts center is very exciting, too. Whether people realize it or not, the arts are a part of our everyday life. Things that we see, things that we listen to, things that we watch on television, it's all a part of the arts, and the arts are an integral part of our life. I'd like to read a quote. Almost fifty-five years ago, the Rockefeller Foundation Panel Report on the arts stated that, "The arts are not for the privileged few, but for the many. They are not just a form of recreation, but are of central importance to our well-being and happiness." I would like to encourage you, I see no reason why you cannot approve this application before you tonight. It will enhance the city during the day, the evening, and on weekends, and it will bring a lot of people to town to enjoy what they have to offer and to enjoy the town. And for those of us that live here, it would be something that would be wonderful for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I've long been appreciative of the Arts Council. They've made a wonderful contribution to this community, helped enrich the quality of life here. A few years ago, when they changed management at the top, Terry brought great verve, energy, and experience, which helps to move things forward. I've attended virtually all of the events that were up there on the screen. So one of the concerns I want to raise to you is about foot traffic. None of those events create foot traffic that comes even remotely close to the kind of foot traffic they had from the city hall. Why is that important? Because that was one of the big concerns about closing the courthouse. How would it, how would your new use serve to bring in the kind of foot traffic that so many businesses depend on? When you saw one of the photographs up there of a recent event of artists giving a presentation, if you take away those artists, and you take away the family members, and you take away the members of the Arts Council who were there, you'll see me up there. There was just two persons from the public. Great event, I learned a lot, I enjoyed it, but only two members of the public. You just don't have the foot traffic. As far as being able to present a great presentation, they've had literally years to do it. The city and county would say they had a Blue Ribbon Commission set up for repurposing, and yet what we found out is that behind the scenes, this is the kind of project that was negotiated. You actually had a lease ready for them, long before someone got the bright idea that, hey, you're supposed to open this up for competition. I don't fault the Arts Council for being part of that, because they have a fiduciary responsibility to get honest money from wherever they can get it. But it doesn't help the city, because when you look back at the court case in San Francisco, the opinion rests very heavily on the existence of the Arts Council, or of the existence of the Blue Ribbon Commission, that was supposed to be repurposing and therefore seeking to avoid a problem, a very significant problem from an economic standpoint. So what you've had is, you don't have the foot traffic, you have the idea that the Art, that the Blue Ribbon Commission went for a year or more on various occasions without meeting. They only met when it was brewing, brewing to do in that case. So the other concern is, yes, it sounds great, but where's the money coming from? It's hard to get grant money for construction. The construction for that building, we already know, is enormous. Why? Because you spent, what, something like thirty thousand to bring in a contractor to tell you what was wrong with it. I don't think you can put a roof on it right now, because it isn't going to sustain that kind of weight. So those are the concerns I have. I don't think it's necessary, as we heard earlier, to attack another group, they're not regrettably part of the process. This one, however, does raise concerns about being able to match the words with actually accomplishment.
You're out of time.
Very much.
Thank you, sir. Another member of the public wishing to address the council. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Jackie Now. I'm going to say what I say to you on most issues, follow your rules. You put out an RFP, you have one valid proposal. It's a good proposal. I think it's time to giddy up and get on with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Giddy up, that's Western, I like that. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Last chance. Now, if you've already spoken, you can't speak twice. But we appreciate the enthusiasm. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring this back to the council. Before I, I'll ask the council members to, maybe see if we have any questions, new questions for the applicant. Let me ask Cleve, did you have anything that we heard during public comments that you would like to clarify, either regarding the process, the applicant? I thought I saw you writing some things down over there.
Well, I was mainly just taking notes of the comments, but I, I don't believe there was anything that really stood out to me. I know there's, there was mention, Mr. Smith mentioned the process, and when we began discussions, you know, the Blue Ribbon Committee was, true, it did include these buildings, but it was primary, primarily focused on the courthouse, and why that was set back. You know, and the discussion of creating foot traffic was- was primarily what could, you know, recreate the foot traffic from the courthouse closing. If you're asking about these buildings in particular, these have been closed for 15 years now, almost.
15, at least.
14 years?
14.
14 years now. So, anything we do in there right now will be an increase in foot traffic to what we have going on. So, that would be my only comment. I, I do agree with your comments, Mayor. You know, it's too bad that this is, kind of been focused just on us against them, and somehow, we couldn't have brought this together to see what works for, for everybody. So, thank you.
All right, Cleve, thank you for that. I, I would just, allow me to add on to that, that actually, an RFP was not even required for this. We, we are not required to do this process. It is a city-owned property. We could've arranged to have some hearings and met with applicants, completely different format. We did this out of a desire to try and be as transparent. And we certainly have sat through hours of presentations and concerns. It, the post office building seems to get thrown under this bus quite frequently now. It is a separate and unique facility owned, again, by the county, yet it is a neat, old post office. And it needs to be considered when it is the object of a project. Right now, the county has declared its surplus. So, please don't get that emotion and try and somehow influence it against this project. Not involved. Very important, but it doesn't have any bearing on the presentation that's before the council this evening. Because it strictly, it does absolutely deserve its day in the sun with the full community involved. As Cleve mentioned, the Blue Ribbon Committee was not a part of this. Again, this is a unique, city-only project. I think we know from recent activities in Sacramento with the judicial funding process that sadly, or, or, I don't know if it's mixed blessings, I don't think we have to worry about the courthouse going anywhere, unfortunately. It's unsafe and worn out. But, right now, that project is 10 years in the future. And, and I would say that that's probably being optimistic. So, now, given those clarifications, I will ask, given the presentation that Terry has, do we have any new questions for her regarding the proposal? Any questions for staff or direction for staff? I would like to make a couple of comments. One of the biggest things that, watching this process this year, has reminded me of, and I had the honor of knowing one of the last volunteer chiefs and assistant chiefs, Frank Fauzal, who was an adamant supporter of the Placerville Volunteer Fire Department. And this whole process has reminded me that they were a very proud group. And they did serve this community for decades. And this was a firehouse. And the, during this present, during this, during this entire process this year, we did see one, we've seen some suggestions that it would be nice to do a couple of things there. One, recognize that it is indeed a historic firehouse. Make sure that we continue to honor that. And I would suggest that the council, my councilmembers, consider making a requirement that some sort of reproduction, either working or non-working, firehouse doors go back on that street frontage, so that we fully honor the confidence and the fact that it was actually where they came out with the hand pumper, horse-drawn pumper. And to also think about, including, the most current version was where the city had the old pay envelope slot, in the little alcove. You've got the two doorways, you've got the big center arch and the two small arches. The arch closest to the parking lot was last used by Dave Warren and his staff to collect utility bills. And we put community notices up. That was where we posted city council agendas at one time. I would suggest that we look at maybe considering if it's possible having that be some sort of a rotating display that honors the long history of the Placerville Volunteer Fire Department and the fact that that is what the building was. So, other than that, and I think that what Terry and her team has presented is this, is an excellent place to start to direct our staff to begin those negotiations. You know, it was interesting, when you, when I first saw all the little handbills for everything that you've done there, and I thought, oh my goodness, why did Terry put all these in here? But you go through those, and the connection to Eldorado County is just so clear on every single one of them. So, to say that, that what you have done in the past and what you would do in the future wouldn't fully honor the history and the culture of this community, it's impossible to deny it. The other thing that I didn't hear a lot of the history buffs say throughout this year was that there is a tremendous tradition of live theater all through the Gold Rush towns. And some of those, some of those theaters stands, some still in service, sadly, a lot of them are closed now. I used to go over to Drytown and see the, the, oh gosh, Clay Piper Theater in an old, very authentic, very hot in the summertime, live theater. And it was quite a hoot. And so, to say that we shouldn't have a small, live theater on Main Street is absurd in my mind. It absolutely fits into what these miners did, and they had a grand old time going to the theater whenever they could. So, those are my thoughts. And I would welcome other directions or, or suggestions for our staff.
I have a comment to make. Terry, thank you very much for your presentation. You've been very patient and gracious through this long process. There's been a lot of talk about a lot of things as we've gone through this. But one thing that I think's been kind of pushed aside is the merits of your application. And I think this is a really cool project. I'm excited to possibly see it come to fruition on Main Street. It's well thought out with the maintenance fund, because that's definitely gonna be an issue for that building. So, I like that in the proposal, there's a long-term solution for how we're gonna deal with that. And I, you know, looking at the rotating exhibits, I love the variety of the exhibits and the programming and how you celebrate the region in a broad and inclusive way, both past and present. So, I, I think this is a great project, and I'm, I'm glad to see it where it's at now.
Patty, would you like to?
I would. And I, I concur with what Kara just said. And I, I, I fully expect that if, if they, if, if we, if we conclude that, and this is, we follow through, and the Arts Council has more, that they really become the owners, that we're gonna see a lot of change. I mean, there's gonna be more presentations, and I, I, I just fully expect to, to see a lot more with that. I, I also, I agree with Mark about the recognition for the fire, the past. And I, I honestly, I had no idea that it housed all those different, the variety of what was in there. But we constantly hear about the firehouse, and we, we have a lot of folks around here that really would like to, and I, I think you'd have a lot of help from maybe the retired fire people that have, you know, in the past, said that they would be more than happy to. And I just think that we ought to recognize it. I, I really would like to see the doors retired, restored, but I don't know if that's a possibility or not. And I don't think that that's something that we can decide as part of this. And maybe we can. I don't know. But anyway, I am all for the project. I, I think you guys have done a great job. I've attended many of your displays, and I, I have learned so much. And it, and I agree that you have really showed me a lot of history that I didn't realize was there. So, I think I'm in support of, of the project and you.
Vice Mayor Sarah Gosa, would you like to go next?
Sure. I agree with you in terms of community theater on a Main Street. I, I can think of a really famous one, the Birdcage Theater in Tombstone, that may be the, the most famous of all, in a very historic, western town. In terms of the build, I just, I have a question, because I, I don't know this, but when was the last time it was actually a, a firehouse that it was usable? I mean, what was it, like, is it like, in the 1800s still? When was the last time those?
I'll ask Terry if you happen to have that date from all the research work you've done.
Anyone? Crowd? I'll take a.
I think the city moved in as a city, city offices in the early 1900s, 19, I wanna say, 11 or 15?
Andrew has his hand up.
Okay.
1904, the city moved in.
Gotcha. So, if you go by the strict of the interior standards, what the building then becomes is whatever it's had the most propensity of time. And the most propensity of time was not a fire station. And so, if you're gonna go by the standards, that would not fall under it. It actually is been a, a city building a heck of a lot longer than it has been a, a fire department. So, if you're gonna go by the standards, you want it actually reverted back to having those doors at the front, because the propensity of time has had it as something else. And it's now taken on those characteristics of history. So, I, I, I think it would be cool, but I also don't think that would live within the standards, within the historical standards. I, I think this, this is great. We have one RFP in front of us. And so, I'm willing to, I guess I'll, I'll put the motion forward for staff to enter into lease negotiations.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Vice Mayor Sarah Gosa, just.
Do you mind if I?
You're gonna get, you're gonna.
I wanna call it.
You're gonna get a half an hour.
I'll get a comment here.
Because the mayor, because the vice mayor, who had made that motion, we're gonna let Dennis talk for 20 minutes now.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, Sarah.
Start, could you start the call, please? I, I have to say that I, I have been disappointed at the divisive nature of this. It has been challenging with most of the merchants downtown. And I've been, I've been involved with the merchants downtown quite a bit lately over this issue. And, and it's disappointing. And I look forward to seeing this move in a different direction and a different light. I don't expect this FPPC thing to, like the last one, have much merit, and, and we will move past that, and we will move on. I, I, I agree with John Clarici, that this, that this is a tactic, the last time that this happened, I know, I agree with you, this time period. The tactic has been to dump a, a bunch of information on us at the last minute and create havoc and try and confuse and, and muddy the waters. And, and we're ready to move on. We're ready to move on in a positive way, to move forward with the Arts and Culture, and find, find the opportunities to embrace this, this opportunity we have with the community. And I think I, I look at Arts and Culture as a, as, as an organization that, that can help heal some of the wounds, bridge some of those gaps, maybe even reach out to some of those people that, that are looking forward, were looking forward to the opportunity to utilize this in some way as, as a community members and community groups. I don't see why a lot of those things can't happen. I, I'm like the others. I'd like to see this embrace our fire, our local fire departments. They really don't have a home in this community. And that doesn't mean it has to be a permanent display. Maybe it could be a, a seasonal or a temporary display from time to time. I know they have a lot of memorabilia that they would love to see. If the doors go in, they'd probably love to wheel in one of their fire engines and have some fun with that. I don't know. It could be a thing, it may not be. I don't wanna begin to try and plan your programs for you there. I just see the opportunities to really work with the community, heal, and move this forward. So, I, I look forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. So, I think what we'll do is we'll let the experts do the designing and the negotiating. I think you've heard the concerns of the community as well as the council. And I have full confidence that you will take those into careful consideration. We have a motion on the floor. Before I call for the roll call vote, I would like to kind of echo a little bit of what Dennis has said, the divisiveness of this and the concerns from the various factions, if you will, the concerns that the city is going to destroy these buildings. And there is absolutely nothing that's been discussed this evening that would allow that to happen. You've actually heard several of us ask it to go back to be a more firehouse look, because that is how people kind of see it, even though it really should be City Hall, and we should all move back there. And they're all quit before we move back there, because, but, but that's a very interesting point that, you know, again, unfortunately, one side didn't bring that up. But over 100 years of use as a city office is really what the historical designation is, not a firehouse. We won't go there. But it, that's just the divisiveness that happens. There has also been a lot of talk about, oh, we need to, we need a museum, et cetera, et cetera. I've been a member of the Eldorado County Historical Society for probably 20 years, and their membership is probably a little over 120 people. In this entire county, that museum operates on that smaller membership. I've been involved at it at Goldbug Park for over a decade. They are in desperate need of help. No volunteers come forward. They try and try and try. So, there seems to be this, this, this historic, I almost call it historic hypocrisy, because there's this big demand to come to a meeting and demand that we stop everything. But these very real needs out in our community, the cemeteries that are a disgrace, the parks that need volunteers, our county museum that has less than 200 members, nobody signs up for that. And so, I, I just wonder what the reality is. Those are, those are very, that's being very selective in, in how you pick your fights. So, with that, I will ask the clerk to please call a roll call.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sarah Gosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion, carry, Dennis, please. Thank you very much. We look forward to continued success and progress on this. And Cleve, do you have any, do you have any idea when this will come back? No. So, but it will come back. The, what will happen next is the staff will work with the Arts and Culture Eldorado to develop, negotiate the lease and any, any other specific issues. And it will come back to the city council for a final review and public, and another public hearing. Thank you all. We'll take a five-minute recess. If the clerk would note, I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order at 7:55. And we will move on to item 12.2, which is to approve Recreation and Parks Commission's recommendations to demolish the restroom at Lumsden Park and shut off all the water to the restrooms and the lawn area. And I think Mr. Jeller is back in place.
I am.
Good evening again, if we could have your report.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. We're bringing this back to you. And so, the council has a decision tonight to, on what to do with the commission recommendation, which was to demolish the restroom and shut off all water to the restroom and lawn area. The, the report that I've submitted has the background that was submitted before, during the discussion item. I do wanna say that, point out before I get into the discussion item, that the minutes that were submitted as an attachment have not been approved by the commission because our September meeting was canceled due to lack of business. And I just wanted to point that out as we moved through that discussion. But mostly, the primary goal tonight is to, is for staff and through the Recreation and Parks Commission, is focusing on trying to halt the continuous repair costs spent on a restroom that is not practically being used by the recreating public and is a condition and location that is not an asset, but a liability to the community. It may have some effect on the current population of those afflicted by homelessness, possibly lowering the population from the loss of proximity to potable water. But I just wanted to emphasize that the primary goal is to manage a budget black hole that we're having right now. And there was some discussion from the city council at the last meeting also, that there was interest to look into the future use of the park. And I believe that in order to do that, and it's in my report also, to do that interest justice, we need a fresh planning effort. I think it's warranted to start on the commission level and to try to get input from the neighborhood and the community as to the future use in order to make sure that we are serving the public as they see fit. And I can take any questions.
Thank you, Terry. Is there any questions for Terry from the council?
Is there any, and I know this, I, I, we already know the answer to this, but do you have any user data on the park?
Coming in, as, as new as I am, I do not. I've, I've looked, and most of the things in the file for Lumsden Park are the 1962 dedication from the Lumsden family. And it is worth mentioning also that this property does have a deed restriction. The property is said to be used for public recreation, and if it's abandoned for that purpose, it's to be returned to the donor or their heirs. So, Lumsden is going to remain a, a property for the city. It's, the spirit of the donation was for it to be a recreational asset. And I think that's the vein that we have to look, to move forward with.
Any other questions for Terry?
Yes, if we're gonna leave it, if we're gonna, if we chose to shut the water off and the...
and the, and basically remove the bathrooms and have dead grass, is it still going to be a park?
It's listed as a neighborhood park right now in our master plan. The newest version was the 2017 update to the master plan. And it'll just be minus the amenity of the restroom.
And will the gates stay open?
Right now, the gates are co-managed by the city and the property owners. They are meant to be locked at night. That's to protect the park and also prevent private access to the, to the public parking after dark.
Right. Thank you. Patty, did you have a question?
I did. Regarding the turning off the water, I thought I read in here somewhere that you planned to turn the water on manually to keep the area green?
That's correct. I've got that in my, on my second page, right before the options.
Okay, because I was, I was happy to see about that because I really hate to see that all just be dead grass. And I think what Dennis was saying too, that at least it could be used for something. I mean, it's a park, you know, I don't, I don't know. Anyway, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Good, 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 good. Terry, I had one question. Did you have an opportunity to look at the existing playground equipment to see if it could be relocated?
I did look at it, and it is, it's in pretty good shape for a 20-year-old piece of equipment. The problem that I've had in the past, and I've moved probably a half dozen of these in my career, and most of them have been up to 15 years old, and one of the main problems with play structures, and it's just kind of a, specific to the business of creating these, these public play structures because there's so, there's so many codes involved in creating them, and the codes constantly change. And so the industry is one where they come out with new playground pieces every year, and they do slight adaptations to the existing play structures. So having available parts for something that's nearly 20 years old, if we do break something in a, in a, in a teardown and a rebuild, it might affect the efficacy of doing that. I can't say whether or not it would be completely successful. I have my doubts looking at the age of the equipment.
All right, thank you very much. All right, if there's no other questions for staff at this point, I'll go ahead and open a public comment on this item and invite any member of the public wishing to comment on item 12.2 to please come forward, state your name for the record, and we will ask for a three-minute time limit on your comments. Good evening, Sue.
Good evening, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. And I've attended enough budget meetings and watched as Lumsden Park really is the black hole of the Recreation Department. It has sucked up far more than its logical portion of the Recreation Funds for the city. And it has become, I think, a liability rather than an asset at this point in time. And I think that having the bathrooms being used for drug traffic means we just plain need to tear those down, shut the water down and, you know, keep it green, but make it so that it can't be pirated. And put a close to the black hole of the Recreation Department and put that money to use for places where they are being enjoyed and people are using them. Because I agree with Councilmember Borelli last time when she says it's really a shame that this has happened, but reality is that it has happened. And it's no longer a viable city park. It really, we really need to do what we can to take out the bathrooms. The play equipment, if it can't be moved, fine, leave it there, but quit trying to bring it back to life until we can solve the other problems that are associated with it. And one of them is Lumsden Ranch. And the fact that Lumsden Ranch is not doing their part for vegetation management to make that area safe. And until and unless we can get Lumsden Park to also do their part, there really is not much of a future for Lumsden Park. And I think that this is the best action we can take at this time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Artie Johnson. I spoke to this matter in the last meeting, and I wanted to read some notes from the Recreation and Parks Minutes. I'm not using names because I don't want to make like a personal attack, but just some comments that were made at the last meeting. So one comment is they're camping, they are camping, have to go to the restroom, so if the restrooms are closed, they will go anyways. This is after a member talked to the homeless people that were staying in the park. So even if you tore down the bathroom, they're still gonna go to the bathroom there. Another comment was, it's a neighborhood park, it doesn't need a restroom. Well, you could use the fast food. Well, fast food people don't like, you know, going in there, visiting their commercial establishment, using their bathroom without buying something. Another member made a comment that a drinking fountain should be installed there. Apparently, there's not a drinking fountain there. If we remove the restrooms, we may never get it back again. This was another member of the council that made that comment. The main problem is the transient problem. Until we address that, nothing's really gonna happen. You might get rid of some of the vandalism, obviously, but things will still continue there. If you turn off the water and let the park go brown, was another comment. And it'd be a perfect park for a dog park, which is great, but if you turn off the water, it wouldn't be a very attractive dog park. The recommendation to the city council is we demolish the restrooms and remove all water at this park. That might solve part of the problem, but it doesn't really address the true cause or solution. So once again, I said, in my opinion, demolition of the bathroom would be the last resort after other measures are tried. Tearing down the privacy walls, adding additional lighting in the park, clearly marking hours the park is open and additional signs, the consequences of the violation of park rules, increased patrols by star and police, adding cameras, even if they're fake, would decrease the vandalism of the bathrooms, littering, broken pipes and other illegal activities. The water could be turned on, on and off and locked when not needed, and this should reduce these problems, but will not eliminate them. And once again, it's really the cause that we have to look at. If you do this to this park, maybe we do give it back to them. It's no longer gonna be a park. So give it back to the people that own it and let them deal with it. That's another solution. But then you also ask yourself, what's the next step? Rotary Park? If it continues?
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Please, yes, another member of the public wishing to address the council. Good evening again.
Jonathan Gainsborough again. Just a couple of thoughts. There's a story in the Bible that we all are familiar with or perhaps don't hear that often. Two women, each had babies, and the infants, both of them, one of them died during the night. And the story goes that, that the, one of the mothers in the night, they use as the words that these were ladies of the night, which is a sad thing for the glory of womanhood that God created women to model for humanity. But one of the women of the night traded her dead baby for the living baby. And so in the morning, there was a fight over which baby. And so the item came to King Solomon, who had prayed and said, God, give me wisdom, give me an understanding heart. And God gave Solomon some wisdom there, and Solomon said, give me the baby and we will cut the baby in half and give half to each mother. At which point, one of the mothers spoke up and said, no, no, let her have the baby. I just want the baby to live. Solomon could tell who the real mother was. I say that to just say I won't use up all my time. I am a preacher. Forty years preachers must preach, but my main issue is the humanity of the homeless. The baby was not cut in half. Last week, I was at a meeting that made me very sad. There was a high county official, city official, I won't say which, who said that the homeless situation is like a bird feeder. This was at Park Community Church sponsored by the county Republicans, but also the county and city police and marshal and other dignitaries were there anyway. The statement was made by the person on the platform that the homeless are like a bird feeder, and as long as the bird feeder, they're like, they're like birds with a bird feeder. And if you put a bird feeder out there and you put feed in it, the birds will come and defecate all over, the feeder, defecate all over, could use other words, but we'll use crap perhaps. They could be defecatory on the pool, the lawn furniture, the house, the backyard, they will just continue dumping. So the official authority said the solution is to stop them from cropping on everything, just get rid of the bird feeder. Now, the comparison, that is appalling, to compare the homeless to defecation of birds on a bird feeder. You all are above that human and compassion level, and so is every hired county and city official in this county. And we need to show our humanity and our compassion in finding solutions. And maybe Lumsden needs to be shut down for now, one last thing. In the point in time count that was released last week that we all should be looking at, 14% of the 613 homeless said that they were employed, but 44% or three times that number said they would like employment. Let's do something positive for the homeless. There are triage one which want to be, regain their life, and there's others who just want to float. But anyway, God bless you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item?
Good evening, council. Jackie New. I'm just gonna be brief. I want to remind the council that we have two other parks that do not have bathrooms. So a bathroom does not mean, I mean, you can have a park without a bathroom. We have two great functioning parks without bathrooms. We have a bathroom, it's old, it's in a bad location, it can't be upgraded because of ADA compliance. It can't be used because it's constantly destroyed. That's where you're at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jackie. I see an additional member of the public approaching the podium.
All right, John, again. I wasn't gonna say anything, but Jackie inspired me. Yes, this, this has been a problem for some time. It needs to be dealt with. Unfortunately, dealing with it means raising the building because there's no way to look into the future and say there'll be a functioning park with a nice bathroom because as we've discussed, primarily with the homeless situation in that area, they make it impossible for that to happen. If you fix it, they will break it. If you fix it again, they will break it again. This is not unique to Lumsden Park. They vandalized the park and ride bathroom, they vandalized the park, the bathroom at Rotary Park. Just about every place that there's a bathroom, except for maybe the ones on Main Street because they're a little too public, they vandalized them. I'm Catholic. We rarely even read the Bible, but I do recall a few things since we're gonna hearken back to the, to the days of the Bible. My recollection is that Jesus was an itinerant preacher who was frequently brought in to the homes of wealthy people where he went to preach. It's easy to feed the homeless. That's the fun part. That's the part that makes you feel good about yourself. Housing the homeless, that's the part that nobody wants to do. The telling thing isn't that there are five churches that are willing to be part of the nomadic shelter. The telling thing is that there's only five that are willing to be part of the nomadic shelter. And the reason is, is because it is a pain. The homeless bring a bushel basket of problems with them that are not mitigated easily. And those churches are starting to find that out. Now, the Catholic Church runs the upper room, but you don't see the Catholic Church sitting here saying, oh, by the way, maybe we should start housing some of those people that we invite into our community with free food. You talk about this subject, you're gonna sound like an a-hole from get-go because it is a tough one. But to sit here and say that the only way to solve this problem is to leave this thing in place, fix it, put some gadgets around it, and that's somehow gonna make the people that are messing it up somehow not wanna mess it up anymore, I'm sure the chief will tell you that's a fool's errand. You know it's a fool's errand if you sit up there because you see the reports on this stuff. Take this building down, then we need to have this discussion about a shelter, not because the shelter's gonna fix the problem, because the shelter is just a way to get at the rest of the problem. Equating people with birds is probably not very harsh, but we are human animals and we are all driven by the same thing, and the first one is to get some food. That's the problem you've got. Tear the building down.
Thank you for your comments, John. Is there any other member of the public that wants to comment on this item? Seeing no one else approaching, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council. And is there any questions for staff? Is there any comments or someone's only to talk about what type of a motion we should, or excuse me, what direction we should give staff?
But there is no question that this homeless issue is a very complex and long-term issue. And this, I don't, personally, I don't see any opportunity to fix this where it doesn't get torn down and cost the city money and a lot of it. And we have already put quite a bit of money into this. And, you know, they just, they just don't respect that bathroom. And our public does not have the opportunity to utilize it either. I, I don't see a solution that involves keeping it. I just don't. Not only that, it's reached, it's exceeded its useful life, it's beyond that point. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons. They, you know, we put a chain on it, they cut it, and then they destroy it again. So, and I use they, and it's unfortunate because, you know, I'm working with the Opportunity of Knox and the COC program right now, and, and there's a lot of things getting ready to begin to proceed to get started with the homeless. And it just, it's painfully, it's a painful process to get from here to where we're actually helping people, the mentally ill, with the drug addiction and such. And we're not gonna solve that in the near future, and that's not gonna help us with this problem. So I don't see a good, I see one solution right now, and I think you know what it is, so I'll leave it at that.
Carrie, would you like to comment on this?
Sure. I agree with Dennis's comments and also with the sentiments of the speakers. This is a, it's a big problem and it's incredibly difficult to address, and we do need to go about it with compassion. And as Dennis mentioned, and we kind of learned at the joint meeting with the county supervisors, there are a lot of things that are in the works right now. And I know that time is slow progressing with this issue, but I also think that there is only one way to deal with this bathroom, and that's to get rid of it. And I think we should also be looking long-term at what we're gonna do with Lumsden Park. And I don't know, I don't think we necessarily should take off the table giving it back to the donor and/or the heir. I think that should be on the table. I don't know if that's the right thing to do at this point, but I think we should look into it in the long term. And in the short term, we should get rid of the bathroom.
Thank you. Patty, we're gonna make Michael go last because he, I'm ignoring him.
I agree with the other comments from the other counselors, and I just, again, as I stated before, this just makes me sick, but it is what it is. And I think that, I really have to commend our staff, and we've tried. I mean, they've tried, and what they've been through to help remedy this is just not working. And I just, I agree. I think this is the only thing we can do.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Just a couple of comments. Just a couple of comments. I agree with Ms. Rodman. I think we need to look at, you know, what the owners of Lumsden Ranch, I don't know. Chief, on the fires, were those all on the private property, or was any of that actually on city property?
Off the top of my head, I know at least one fire was in the park, and I don't know how many. I know there was one up in the Lumsden Ranch area.
Okay. I mean, I think we should be sending a bill to these folks or looking at any other legal means we can to spur them on to actually fulfilling their duties, which is actually keeping their property from having people living on it. So, I would like to look at options that we have with that to kind of force some action there. It could be a lien. I think we have, I think we have tools in our toolbox that could compel those owners to actually be good neighbors to everybody else that lives in that area. So, I think under the, as we've discussed, you know, we've got to look at all options here. I think we have to look at what powers the city has as well to ensure that those neighbors that are the sort of out-of-town neighbors that don't really do anything there are actually doing something to maintain the property. And then, lastly, I just want to thank the Parks and Recreation and Parks Committee for all the work that they've done on this. I know this wasn't an easy decision for them to come to this conclusion. In fact, I know it was probably the last thing they had thought of to do. But after, I think, a lot of soul-searching and talking to neighbors and public comments, you know, they came to us with this recommendation, and I would be in agreement with that. So, I just want to thank them for all the hard work on this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Saragosa. Appreciate it. You're welcome. We are so far behind on things. It is so frightening to tear something down because it takes so long to build anything in this city facility. Takes decades, it seems like. So, I asked Cleve this morning if he had any easy suggestions, and he didn't. Because it's just, you just don't, you don't go around knocking things down. We're supposed to be building things. We're supposed to be maintaining things. All right. So, that said, we have a couple of very successful neighborhood parks that never had a restroom planned in them, and they have thrived. They have been supported by their neighborhoods. They've been supported by various community organizations, the Siroptimus, the Rotaries, so on, to be real assets to their neighbors. Lumsden Park is probably one of our oldest. I went out there, Cleve, I have bad news for you. I changed my mind. It is time to knock this one down. It is just totally outdated. I joke with Cleve, there's a relatively new public facility over in Colfax that's built out of block. It's a city-owned facility, and it's a maintenance guy's dream because it's designed to be a restroom. You don't go in and sleep in it. You don't camp in it. You don't, it's, the way they intentionally blade the blockwork, it's perfect. This is never going to happen out there with this poor old structure. I think the term that we've gotten hung up on, I've been trying to help city staff for ten or fifteen years with vandalism at Lumsden Park. And we forgot that whoever these people are, whether they're homeless or their kids living down the street, they're vandals. Okay? I don't care who, you know, beyond that, they're vandals. And this has cost us tens of thousands of dollars over the last ten or fifteen years out there. It was so bad that we didn't even have time to report it sometimes. So, what this vandalism leads to is that nobody is using that restroom because it has to constantly be shut off or locked, chained, welded shut. So, it is not serving any user, no matter what part of this community they are. So, that leads you to the idea of, well, who is the real user of this park? And I think it's really time. We need the acreage. It's important, I think, to keep the acreage because we do have a commitment to provide green space. I appreciate all the hard work staff has done in all the various things out there. It's very important to know tonight. It's the first time I knew there was actually a deed restriction on it. You had heard us talk about, well, maybe we could sell it and be done with it. Well, no, it goes back to the Lumsden family, who I happen to be familiar with. So, I would suggest the following things, is that we demo the building. We explore vandal-proof irrigation because I think it would be a shame to lose the green space. I was out there this morning. There's a couple of homeless folks and their dogs sleeping on the lawn. The mower crew is there doing their cleaning. I assume that's who that was, and they were working through the park. They were very polite and worked around everybody. So, the green space is very, very nice. So, I would say demo the building, explore vandal-proof irrigation between now and spring. And I would say, we've discussed this before, we need to move the gate. We need to move the gate, and we need to make the pond a reservation-only type of facility. Close it. Today was, today was the first time in all the years that I went up there and there was no drug or sex traffic going on at the pond. I was shocked that the parking lot was empty. And that's sad. I totally expected to find people up there doing stuff. So, that is kind of the history with that. So, the other thing that, as my colleagues have shared, is we really need to send a very strong message as we enter fall and winter to the folks that own Lumsden Ranch. The hundred and twenty-four acres, I believe it's out-of-town investors that have it. They need to step up because that is where all of these, the homeless camps are taking place. It's not in the city park. It's up on that privately-owned property that is very inviting. So, I would actually be willing to make the motion this evening to make that...
And I'll second it, but I also want to quiz you more. You said we need to address it with these owners. We've been talking about this...
I know.
...for months and months and months, and I, what kind of teeth do we have to make this happen with these owners?
We have the new vegetation management program.
There is a code enforcement action on the property, I believe. Correct, Pierre?
Yes, that is correct. Staff is taking immediate action currently to bring that property into compliance.
Have you had any response from them?
We were originally working with the property owners, and you may not be aware, but there is, there is a house on that property. And so, the owner of the property was working with the tenant, and then the tenant was actually trying to clean up the property. But after seeing the photographs that were taken subsequent to the fire, it's clear that the homeless people had moved back in along with additional debris. And so, it didn't work. So, we're going back to actually fining the property owner. Usually, the property owner's been pretty responsive when they see the fines. The fines will grow. And then, with our new ordinance coming into play, then we'll, we're going to look at requiring that they do some additional fire remediation with respect to the fuels that are on, fuel load on that property as well.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. It's just so sad. I just think that that park just holds so many possibilities, especially with that pond up there, you know, for kids and recreation and everything. And I just think the whole thing is sad. So, maybe when we get those properties, surrounding property owners to do something, then we'll have more opportunity to make this better, make it what it used to be. Anyway, I seconded it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
I was just going to say, when we have the fishing derby, it'd be great, and I don't know what the cost is, but if we could get a couple of porta-potties out there for at least during that time, I think would be great.
Yeah.
I'd like to speak to that. We already put porta-pots up there, so the restroom has had very limited use even when we've had that derby.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And again, I want to thank everybody for all their hard work, the Recreation and Parks Commissioners, all our community members and the neighbors and staff. Hopefully, this will allow this park to transition into a neighborhood park with the limited facilities, and hopefully, we'll be able to keep the turf green. And we'll still have our six acres. Good night to those folks that are leaving us. We're moving on to item 12.3, and I am not even going to begin to read all of these. Let me see here. Approve a cooperative agreement with Caltrans in regards to Phase 2.2 of the eastbound on-ramp project at Placerville Interchange. Does our city engineer Rebecca Neves have the report?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the Western Placerville Interchange's Phase 2.2 project proposes to construct an eastbound on-ramp. The phase-two portion of the project is currently under construction, which will be concluding before the end of this year. The city received one million seventy thousand in local partnership program state funds to be used in the future construction of the project. The project improves access to Highway 50, and Caltrans, also recognizing these benefits, decided to partner with the project based on the project's merits. They've committed one million dollars in state highway operational and protection program, or SHOP, funds in the future construction of the project. And the item before you includes the approval of the cooperative agreement with Caltrans for those future SHOP funds. The environmental phase is underway and proceeding well. As it goes with these projects, we're very fortunate to have also the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, EDCTC, as a partner on the project, as they've signaled their support by programming highway infrastructure program funds, or HIP, funds, on the project with $200,000 for the preliminary engineering phase and $744,946 for the future construction. The additional $200,000 in the appropriation recommended this evening assists in funding the second notice to proceed with REY engineers to continue the environmental engineering, environmental and engineering design for the project. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any questions for our engineer before I open this up? Don't think we have, you know, open this up to public comment. Item 12.3. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on this Caltrans agreement for the next phase of the Placerville Interchange project? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Is there any questions or someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. We adopt a resolution approving, well, one, two, one through four.
Oh, very good. And is there a second? Moved by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Is there any other discussion? I will ask for a roll call vote. Loss of money.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I wonder what Rebecca's going to do when she no longer has to...
I don't even want to think. I wonder what she wonders what she's going to do. She'll probably have a worn-out car by then. All right. Moving on to, in the same vein, 12.4. Adopting a resolution approving various funding for the Broadway, Upper Broadway Bike Lane Project. Rebecca, would you like to give us your staff report, please?
Yes, sir. The item before you this evening is for approval of a construction management contract with Drake Haglen Associates, various budget appropriations, and most notable, granting staff permission to release the project for public bid and then the construction contract. We're very excited about this item. The Upper Broadway Bike Lanes and Pedestrian Connection Project spans from the intersection of Chanel School Road to Point View Drive on Broadway. Current conditions on Broadway include narrow lanes in the roadway and little to no paved shoulders in some areas. There is no defined space for pedestrian and bicycle traffic, and users are often found walking or riding unsafely in vehicular travel lanes. The proposed project will allow for bicycle traffic to travel safely along Broadway in either a Class II bike lane in the eastbound uphill direction or a Class III bike facility in the westbound downhill direction. The proposed project will also allow for pedestrian traffic to travel safely along Broadway by constructing strategically-located sidewalks and additional pedestrian improvements. Improvements to the road also include a bus transit turnout east of the Chanel School Road intersection and preservation of the transit stop at the upper room. Although at first blush, this project is a bike and pedestrian project, it also carries with it the added benefit of various repairs to the city's existing road, storm drain system, and much-needed repairs to the existing sewer manholes within the project vicinity. For those items needing repair that could not be justified through the use of the federal and state dollars programmed to the project, we're covered by Measure H and Measure L to repair, replace, and maintain the city's existing roads, storm drains, and sewer system. Just for an understanding of the benefits to rolling these improvements into the construction package, there are economies of scale savings when taking the opportunity to address failing infrastructure while already having a contractor mobilized. The total roadway improvement costs included in this project, the city's existing road, is $849,403.50 based on the most recent engineer's estimate. The total storm drain improvement cost of the existing system, or replacement and repair of the city's storm drain system, is $332,960 based on the recent engineer's estimate. And the total sewer system repair is $50,000. That is a total cost of $1,232,363.50 of improvements that are related to the repair, replacement, or maintenance of the city's existing roadway, storm drain, and sewer systems included with this project. And yet, the city's local funds appropriated to this project is $275,000 of Measure L and $50,000 of Measure H for a total amount of $325,000 of local funds, or a mere 26.4% of the total cost of the needed improvements. That's a very good investment in return with our precious local dollars. On February 5th, 2014, city staff submitted an application to EDCTC for CMAC, congestion mitigation air quality funding, for the environmental compliance and design of the project. The city was awarded those funds and moved into the project approval and environmental documentation phase. The city also managed to secure additional funding in the form of two cycles of active transportation program funding, both federal and state sources, to fully fund the construction of the project. As it goes with these types of funding, it contains an accelerated delivery schedule to getting the project out to construction. For those who may not be aware of the time it takes to deliver a federally-funded project, it's approximately eight years from concept to construction. This project has taken five years to deliver to construction with its accelerated schedule, which was no small feat of its own, and I'm really grateful for our project team that has delivered this. I'm also really grateful for Eldorado Transit as well. They've been an excellent partner on the project. On April 10th of 2018, Placerville City Council adopted the environmental document in the form of its Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration, ISMMD. Over the last year, design and right-of-way advanced quickly to keep the project in compliance with the funding delivery requirements. Design on the project has progressed and is now complete, and the project is ready to be released for construction. To support staff on the project during construction, with addressing the federal reporting requirements, staff released a request for proposals following the federally-required process. Proposals were received. Interviews were conducted by an independent panel of construction and engineering staff from other agencies. Drake Haglen Associates was selected for recommendation of the construction management project, project, or contract for this project, which is included in this item before you. Our project manager from DHA, Mr. Howard Zabel, is in the audience. Thank you for attending, Howard. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you, and that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
That was quite a report. Is there any questions from the council at this point? All right? No?
No questions. Excellent job.
Comment? Ooh, very good. All right. I'll open this comment up to the public. Any member of the public wishing to address the council on this Broadway pedestrian project? Please come forward. State your name for the record. Good evening. Again, sir.
Jonathan Gainsborough. Totally approved and very proud of the city to be doing this. This is something I was going to bring up. I was told by some of the homeless that there were five fatalities or serious accidents with pedestrians over the last decade. One is too much, but it's totally dark at night, and the mental illness quotient of the pedestrians walking there is higher than anywhere else in Eldorado County, including in front of the Puff Unit. So, I commend the project. If we, if the public could know, I would love to know tonight what the actual turnkey date would be looking at to the accomplishment, but wonderfully thought out and looking forward to it being accomplished.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing Sue Rodman approaching, a member of the Measure H and L committee. Good evening again, Sue.
Okay, now I've been properly introduced. Measure H and Measure L was very happy to be able to put the funds in where they had to have matching funds, where we had to have local funds because we weren't allowed to use some of the federal and state funding for some of these things that are repairs and maintenance. And we were happy to do this, and I think Rebecca has done an excellent job to say, okay, and we're only, what, 26% of the total project is coming from local dollars, and some of that is Measure H and L, which we're very proud to do. So, I think this is great.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments from the public on this item? Close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Any questions or?
Quick, quick comment. I, I, you know, there's one of the challenges of, of doing road construction and, and sewer and water where you don't see what we're doing. And people don't have the opportunity to appreciate the work as if the road in front of their house was being done. And, and I do know that this is a, while there's not many people listening, maybe somebody will watch this tomorrow. That they, they'll recognize that these are critical infrastructure issues that was one of the reasons we did Measure H and L and that, you know, it's not sexy, it's not, it's not new lines on the street, it's not, you know, paved like Main Street was and things like that, but it's getting done. And it's, it's, it's helping our sewer system and it's, and it's gonna save us money down the road in this area. So I, I do know I had questions about this and about the, the expense of Measure H and L funds on this project, and there, there were some concerns from legitimate, what I would call legitimate, citizens in our community.
Interested, because I'm glad you're bringing this up because I had the same thing.
Some truly interested people that weren't just on the internet, you know, spewing venom. And, and so they, you know, they had a, they had a serious concern because they were concerned about the, the, the use of this money, the perception of the use of this money, and why it was being used in this manner. And so I did have a chat with Rebecca and got a little more information. So I, and I appreciate how it's being used and why it's being done this way and the work of Measure H and L Committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
The comments I heard was, and they, and I, I don't do Facebook, so I didn't see those comments, but I've had people tell me, or ask me, why are, is this what Measure H and L was meant to do when our streets still haven't been fixed? And I said, yes, it really, you know, it's probably helped save this project, so it's really important, you know? And I can't tell you, since I've been on the council, how many times we've had people come before us and ask us to do something with that roadway up there and complained about how dangerous it is. We have not only the homeless, but we have a lot of other folks, kids that, you know, and they, that, that road is really well used, and I, I just think that this is just a, a safety project, too, as well as, you know? Yeah, so, anyway.
If I may make one minor clarification, so the $1.2 million was related to improvements of the roadway, the storm drain, and the sewer. The actual overall engineer's estimate of hard construction costs is about 3.7 million. So Measure H and L is actually combined contributing less than 10%, the total construction contract value. So I just wanted that clarification.
That's good information.
Because when the construction contract comes forth, it's gonna be quite a bit larger.
Yeah, absolutely.
Carrie, did you have any comments?
Uh, no. No additional comments. I'm looking forward to this project being done.
All right, Michael?
When, when is that date?
Oh.
Thank you for reminding me. I did have a note to address that question. We are sending the project, there was a tentative schedule in the staff report, we're sending the project out to bid in October with the construction contract awarded in December of this year and estimated construction completion December of next year. So Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We'll probably get it for Halloween, I'm thinking. Nobody's got a lot of work in there, it's cold in the winter. Michael, did you have any other comments or observations?
I'll second.
Dennis wants to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt item 12.4 and items one through 10 as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. I had one other question for our city engineer. To phrase this another way, some of the Measure L money especially, it's going in there and it's gonna be put to use in identified repair work?
Yes.
That would have been part of Measure L's function anyway.
Yes, it is.
Correct.
We're actually just receiving the benefits of the economies of scale, and one of the examples I'll use is the Measure H funds, the 50,000, is actually being dedicated to lining the sewer manholes within the project vicinity. I believe there's a total of eight. And we've experienced, over the last several winters, you know, especially with it being so close proximity to the creek, as the groundwater table rises with rainfall during the wet season, we can actually pop the manhole lid and watch water pouring into the barrel of the manhole. So this will actually stop that from happening.
Most excellent. So there are very clear ties to the using of L and H money.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. I'll call, ask the clerk to call a roll call.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This has been a 15-year want project, literally, so thank you very much. Very, it's gonna be a huge improvement to a very hazardous situation. All right, well, I think we're done with our engineer for the moment. Moving on to 12.5, adopt a resolution retroactively approving a job description. Mr. Zeller?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. We have a resolution before you tonight, item 2.5, 12.5, and it's, it's meaning to retroactively approve job description and salary range for a position of Rec, Recreation Coordinator II. And it's looking to be retroactive to our effective salary range that was issued on January, January 12th of, of this year. Community Services Department currently has an employee working at the level of a Rec Coordinator II, but the position doesn't have an approved job description or salary range, and that's what we're here to request remedy for tonight. The position was created as a result of a transfer of an employee from the position of Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police, not the existing Chief of Police, and to the Community Services Department, and the salary and benefits also transferred, but the employee is performing duties at an equivalent skill level, and so the job description and the salary range before you is meant to reflect those duties that are being performed at present. So what I'm looking for is approval of the new job description and salary schedule and the resolution.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there any questions for Jerry? Seeing hearing none, are there any, I'll open the public comment on this item, 12.5? Excuse me, 12 point, yeah, 12.5? Is there anyone in the public wishing to address the council? Seeing no one approaching the podium, close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Someone like to make a motion?
So move?
Second. He was bad before, was seconded by Councilmember Taylor. The motion was by Councilmember Borelli. I know. Let's see, there's dollars involved. Roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Oh, man, if Jason's listening with his headphones on, we just, every one of these votes is getting him. Oh, look, we're back to the city engineer again. Item 12.6. Let's see, approve a construction contract with GSE Construction, a secondary clarifier grout floor project. Now, this is exciting. I love our plant. Rebecca, could you please give us a report?
Absolutely. The item before you this evening is for approval of the construction contract with GSE in the amount of $59,718 for the replacement of the secondary clarifier number one grout floor project at the Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility. Secondary clarifiers are cylindrical basins with a rotating sweeping arm in which effluent is held for a period of time during which heavier biomass or microorganisms settle to the bottom as activated sludge.
Sludge.
In March of this year, the secondary clarifier number one failed. After draining the unit and performing a full inspection, it was determined that the sweep arm mechanism was impeded because it was coming into direct contact with the grout floor. The grout floor was inspected and found to have separated from the main concrete floor of the secondary clarifier in several locations. The scope of this project will be to replace the grout floor to allow the sweeping arm mechanism to resume and use of the secondary clarifier to be reinstated prior to the wet months. Staff obtained two bids and has selected the bid from GSE Construction in the amount of $59,718 as the lowest responsible responsive bidder. If the contract is awarded this evening, work will begin in October ahead of the rainy season. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. And you know, you read the staff report and you realize what our staff did, where they went down and what they claimed and what they found. These are fun places to work. Is there any questions for staff before I open a public comment?
The difference, the difference between the two bids, I'm sure you noodled that around quite a bit, but why is that such a difference?
You know, it had to do with, some of the scope was a little bit more clear cut with one versus the other, and I, I don't know if it was just, you know, you know, because we walked the job and presented it to both contractors. I don't know if it was just a misunderstanding on the bidder's standpoint. I do know that the second bidder does often come in a little higher. There certainly also is qualified to do the work, but given that we're responsible for the public funds, we obviously select the lowest bidder that is also responsible.
Yeah, good, thank you. Good point, Dennis. This is about a double the cost. Mr. Orin would not be happy. All right, I'll open public comment on this item, 12.6, repairing our clarifier out at the wastewater reclamation facility. Sue Rodman, did the Measure H and L Committee have any comments? We gotta get you your own microphone.
Measure H and L doesn't have any comments on this one, but yeah, this is something you have to do. This is part of your system to make sure that you have done your due diligence to treat the, the wastewater coming in and getting it done before winter hits is a very good idea. Yeah, this is one that, thanks Rebecca for explaining exactly, but if you've got a, a sweeper that's getting bumped into the grout floor, it's not working. So you have to fix it. That's all there is to it, you know? It's just something you have to do.
We have to have a working sweep arm. Thank you, Sue. All right, is there any other member of the public wishing to comment on 12.6? I will close the comments and bring it back to this council for action. Would someone like to make a motion to get our sweep arm fixed, or so it can sweep again? We need grout.
I'll move we fix our sweep arm. No, the floor, not the sweep arm. We don't need to fix the floor.
We want this, we want this.
We fix the floor.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
So they'll mobilize and get right on this?
Yes, sir.
Before it rains?
Yes, sir.
Let's hope it rains. All right, moving on to 12.7, ratifying a consulting agreement with Drake Haglen and Associates not to exceed 200, $20,000 and some change regarding the repairs of the Hangtown Creek culvert at Jack Russell Brewery, and this is the famous failed sinkhole. We don't get a lot of sinkholes here, which is good, but we got this one.
The item before you is to ratify the consultant services agreement to prepare a feasibility study for the repair of the Hangtown Creek culvert underneath the Jack Russell Brewery parking lot and the related budget appropriation. The culvert is a natural open bottom culvert that conveys stormwater in Hangtown Creek through to Spring Street at Highway 49 and located fully within the city right of way. The easternmost portion of the existing culvert has experienced partial collapse due to severe deterioration of the timber stringers. This became evident on the surface above when a portion of the parking lot leased to Jack Russell Brewery partially collapsed and is now barricaded to prevent vehicle loading with parked cars above it. The feasibility study, received just this afternoon, actually, discusses three potential solutions for repairing the existing and partially collapsed culvert, along with the most cost-effective recommendation. Given that the study was received today, and I certainly would like to go over its results with Mr. Morris, we will be bringing this item back to council with the recommendations for consideration and direction. Staff's recommendations are provided in the report, and that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions for our city engineer?
No, don't touch me.
All right, open public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public wishing to discuss 12.7? Seeing no one approaching, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for action. Would someone like to make a motion if there's no other questions?
I'll move 12.7.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and we will look forward to hearing what they found at our next meeting. Item 12.8, Direct, Direct Delegate, How to Vote on Conference Resolutions at the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. Mr. Morris, we finally come to you, sir.
I waited just for this.
You were good.
Thank you, mayor and council. This item comes every year prior to the League of California Cities Conference. There are proposed resolutions generally submitted by cities that regarding issues that they feel are important. This year, there are two resolutions for consideration. The first is an amendment to Rule 28. Rule 28 calls upon California Public Utilities Commission to expand the rule for program underground overhead utilities to include projects in high fire hazard severity zones. If you're not familiar with Rule 20, those are funds that cities can use to underground facilities. We use the majority of our, well, not the majority, we used all of our funding plus some when we actually did undergrounding project as part of the Highway 50 Ops project on Lower Main Street going into Placerville Drive. So we actually, this is a, funds, credit for funds that we receive from PG&E, and those are credited towards us. Currently, we have a negative balance due to that project, that they allowed us to go to, into a negative balance, and that's not uncommon that they will do that. This program is actually asking that the type of projects that could be eligible for those be expanded to other projects in high fire severity zones where generally out in the open areas, you would not necessarily need to, underground projects because generally it's a visibility and aesthetics issue is why you underground in, in urban areas and et cetera. This request calls upon the California Public Utilities Commission to expand that rule to allow the undergrounding and et cetera to be done in more rural areas, out in the open areas in, in the terms of, for fire safety. So that is the first resolution, and our recommendation is, we think that is a good thing that should be considered, and from a staff perspective, we recommend that you approve that resolution or vote in favor of that. The second one is one that the international transboundary pollution flows down in Southern California relating to the, the border of US and Mexico and new flows from Mexico's Tijuana River into the United States and the pollution that is occurring as a result of that. Staff, this resolution would recommend that we, that California take action to try and remedy and clean up that situation to stop the pollution that is happening. Staff is, as a, because that does not directly affect us here in Placerville, where the other one we thought could, we just had a new, have a neutral recommendation on that. It's up to the council if you feel that's important. We think it is a good thing that that needs to be cleaned up. I know Councilmember Taylor mentioned that she recently visited that area and observed what was going on there, and so I, I think that we leave that up to you, but it probably is a good project, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I don't understand why there has to be this type of, why, why does this need, action need to be taken to, to clean that up? Why, why aren't the laws, why can't California just, you know?
They are. This is more or less just an encouragement from cities to encourage the state government to do more in that area to clean up, to clean it up. So this isn't required for it to happen, for that to happen, but it's, it's one of those to promote, yeah, yeah.
I would think that it's a given, you know, that we would not want that happening.
Sure, yeah.
I was curious.
Vice Mayor Saragosa's going down there.
Yes.
This is important. Is there any questions for Cleve on this item? None, all right. I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item, 12.8, our two recommendations for this year's league. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for action. So what do we need here, Cleve?
I recommend that we direct the delegate how to vote on the conference resolutions at the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting.
And how would you like him to vote?
How would you like, and how would that be?
Oh, I, I want to, I vote aye for both of them. In favor of?
I, I would second that.
All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Saragosa. No going rogue, then. We expect to get a full report back soon.
Yes.
Will do. Could the city clerk get the motion? Thank you very much. Did the city clerk get the motion? Thank you very much. All right, now, we have item 13, council member reports, but let's not forget that we have a couple of important things under 15, 1 and 2 that we need to discuss. So council member reports from other agencies? Do we have anything we need to talk about this evening?
I'll go real quick. On SAICOG, so last time I spoke, I did say that we had allocated a million, that we actually got extra $500,000 for Civic Lab. Unfortunately, what I didn't understand at the time was that that 1.5 million is towards the first-year mobility projects, which was not fully explained, I think, when we were talking about this. However, at this last meeting, where former mayor Wendy Thomas was there to speak on behalf of the Placerville project, which she did a tremendous job of talking about the commercial corridor of Broadway and the interest that we have here, and so staff did say there's a potentiality for some of those funds to maybe, you know, where there's a transit component, there might be some ability there, and then they're also scouring, looking for other funds for us to use for the second-year Civic Lab as well. And so I will do my due diligence to make sure that we can get some of those funds appropriated, because we did actually put quite a bit into the first-year mobility. So I apologize for that misunderstanding. I got that one wrong, but I wanted to just correct that record.
You're forgiven.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? I will just briefly mention that LAFCO is meeting on October 23, and there will be probably a very interesting meeting regarding consolidations of a couple of different fire districts.
I read about that.
So it should be a lively meeting. Two-by-two, don't we have a... Aren't we working on scheduling a two-by-two?
We have one scheduled.
That's right. I remember clicking yes. All right, very good. If there's nothing else, Patty, fire staff, councilor?
We had a meeting Thursday evening. It was very well-attended. I wish there had been more.
Really?
Yeah, more people to come, and I mean, there's so much interest, and yet, you know, the... Anyway, it was a great meeting. We had a presentation from Mr. Joey Benner, and he's the vegetation program manager for PG&E, and I'm going to recommend, I already talked to Cleve about this, but I'm going to recommend that we have him come to one of our meetings. And they've got... He's new, but he's also got so much experience, and I was very impressed with him and his background for having this position. And he explained PG&E's program, and I don't know if any of you have noticed or even... But remember, we always had the Davy green trucks. They... That contract with them has been eliminated, and they are now working with, it's called Mountain Enterprises, and I think that needed to happen from all the complaints I heard about Davy. Anyway, I would really like it if you guys would approve to have this gentleman come, and I'm thinking, I was talking to Cleve, I know there's going to be questions, because we had a lot for him, and I think that we need to, if we have him come, we need to have... You know, there has to be time so that the public can ask questions.
That sounds like a request for a future agenda item.
It is, and I... But I wanted to... I'm bringing it in to that why I'm asking for that. I just wanted to...
Let me see his card.
I wanted to explain it.
Oh, he has a physical address.
And they... The meeting was jam-packed with a lot of... They were talking about the grants that they're going for and some received, and then we also had a gentleman who has a business that's called Prime Supply, and they are offering... They sell pumps, fire equipment, waste treatment, and more, and it's all the things that have been recommended to us. They have, you know, he handed out the pamphlets. They're right here in Tan... Well, Shingle Springs, but they're in local, and so anybody interested in buying any of those things, we have such a place. And that's it.
Thank you, Patty. And so that'll segue nicely into our future agenda items, and we'd like to have that gentleman from PG&E's veg management come. Is he reasonably... Running out of meetings?
I know, and that's what I... Because I need to get on his list, too, because they're busy as bees, so.
So maybe you could work with Cleve and make that contact, and Regina can help with that. Is that agreeable to the council?
Yep.
All right, thank you. I think it's very important to keep up to date as to what they're doing and who they're using. Mountain Enterprises is a large and growing company. All right, if there are... Is there any other requests for agenda items?
I do have a request, and that is that we look at the cost of the request for public information. What are those called? Not FOIA, but...
Public Records Act request.
Public Records Act request, and identify... I know this, I think it's Sacramento, is identifying the people as well as the request and then posting them publicly. I could be wrong, but I believe that's what they're doing, and I would like to... I'd like to do two things. One, look at if we can do that and how we do it, and two, look at what the cost is with some of these, with the lawsuits that are going on, these continued, whether it's an FPPP, FPPC complaint, or it's a suing us, the costs associated with that to the city, and potentially at some point next year, look at as a line item in our budget, what we should appropriate for these, for what the... For these, the expenses of these. So that's what I would like to see, have a discussion at this level.
I just wanted to mention, because you were talking about public records, there's a case, and the chief forwarded a copy of it to me, or at least a report of it, out of Alameda County, where they took a little different approach to recovering their costs and expanded the cost that you can recover under indirect costs. They did a... Dave, this would mean some work for you if we decided to pursue this avenue. They looked at the costs, salaries of personnel who are involved in that. They looked at maintenance costs. They looked at paper costs. They looked at everything going into a cost affecting a production of public records, and they got a... They got it up to where it was about $3 and some change for a copy. Typically jurisdictions charge maybe a buck a copy or less. So, I mean, it's something that if you're interested in doing the endeavor, and it would be a bunch of work for Dave to have to figure that out, but it's a way that you can recoup some of those costs, because right now, we're incredibly cheap. There's... I should tell you, however, that there are... There's a split opinion amongst the courts on the validity of this process and the way they went about it. Two courts have ruled that that's fine. One court says no, so it's probably going to wind up in the Supreme Court to make a decision.
Oh, jeez.
Okay, it is... Well, that is on top of the things.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'd like to explore this whole process of Request for Public Records Act, and to be able to document it and have a place where public can see where our money's going and our time is going, because it's just, there are very few people that are costing this city a lot of money, and I don't think this should go unnoticed.
The... There's no problem that I can see with publishing that information as part of your budget process or whatever. When you start to identify the people making the requests, that's where you could have a problem, because some court could see that as having a chilling effect on the public's right to request these documents. So that could be a little dicey, is what I'm saying.
Okay. I would... Okay. I'd like to do the research, too.
So that would be a future agenda, Missouri General consensus on bringing that forward?
I'd agree.
Patty?
Sure.
All right. Make that so, please. Very good. All right. Moving on to item 15. No, yes, 15.1. Informational report regarding activity by the homeless outreach team within the city of Placerville, Chief Ortega.
Chief, before you start, can I just... I need to apologize to the council. On our agendas, we failed to give you these copies with your agenda. It was in the electronic agenda, but we just handed these out to you tonight because we... So you haven't had a chance to see these yet, but we will. If it's all right with you, go forward with the reports.
Absolutely. Thank you, Cleve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is just a monthly report since, just to review, we've assigned a... One of our police officers full-time to work in collaboration with the sheriff's hot team. We started doing that a couple months ago. So for the six-month test period, just to watch our data, the sheriff's analyst has provided these reports and this data. I'm not going to go through everything. I'll let you kind of go through it. I'll just hit some of the highlights. The first page is the point-in-time count, which you've talked about not only a little bit tonight, but at the previous joint city-county meeting. Then it goes in, there's some specific data for Placerville, talks about active camps, the number of camps that have been vacated, and some of the other efforts. I think one of the other numbers that catches our eye is that there are currently identified as 100 transients documented in the city of Placerville over the first two months versus in the county, so the unincorporated area, the areas outside of our city on the West Slope 49. This number is... May go up a little bit and then start to decline as we identify and assist these folks in getting into the services they need, and there are many that will accept the services and some that don't. There's no cookie-cutter process for each of these persons. There's been some discussion in the past about trespassing on private property. We have a process for that. And then once, if it's on public lands, the hot team and working with the city will try to facilitate cleaning. The public properties up the private property, we work with Pierre and his staff to go for a code enforcement case. And let's see. Lastly, on the last page, it talks about the people that are identified and the types of services that have been offered, and I dare say some of these numbers, at least on the bottom, where it says nine subjects have agreed to assessments for rehabilitation, and four subjects have been housed to date. I think those numbers have gone up. I don't have that data with me. That'll be in next month's report. We'll continue to do these monthly reports for you and the public until the end of the year, and in January, we're going to sit down and evaluate our efforts, and the early data suggests that we are having a definite positive impact on getting assistance to these folks that need it. Many of them want it. They need it, and it is our effort to not only obviously reduce the criminal and nuisance issue, but to be human beings and help these folks get the assistance they need. As I have said publicly previously, it is not our goal to arrest these people. It is our goal to push them into the help that they need and many of them desire. There's a small percentage, though, that will be pushed into custody, and at which time, we also, again, hope that they get the help they need while in custody. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. This is welcome information, and I'm really happy to hear that we'll be seeing it to the end of the year. Councilmember questions for the chief?
I'm kind of curious. It seems like there's a... What... Well, doesn't seem it is. You presented us with a lot of... Is it overwhelming for one person to try to handle all this, or does it seem to be working out?
So we... Just to clarify, we have our one officer assigned to the hot team with three other county deputy sheriffs and a sergeant, and they all come into the city at one time when they're doing their operations.
Oh.
Does that make more sense?
Yes.
They're also coordinating with our patrol officers, because this... I'm real big on not pushing, like, one workload onto one person, so the patrol officers have been instructed to work in collaboration with our assigned officer, and they hit different parts of the city. So no, to answer your... The short answer, Councilmember Borelli, is no. It's he has a team, and the trade-off is, is he goes into the county when asked to assist the county guys with their issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on item 15.1, our update on our homeless outreach team?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. Not homeless yet. Thank you, Chief Ortega. I think this is an amazing effort that you're doing. I also noticed when I looked at the figures that it seems like there's a disproportionate amount of this in Placerville versus the whole rest of the county. So I'm wondering if there's a way to put some pressure on the state or the county to respond to that with increased funding, since we're getting an increased portion of the people who need this help, or is it just that we're more active and the county is not doing as good a job? That's the other possibility there. But it's very, very instructural to read this, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sue. Another member of the public? Good evening again, sir.
Jonathan Gainesborough. I'd like to compliment the hot team on what they are doing and the target to emphasize the positive to... I'm not sure what word the chief used to move them toward resources and help. Is there a way to get a copy, for the public to get a copy of what was given to you all? If there is, I would appreciate it. If not, we can't. Is there a way?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll get your copy.
How would I procure that?
Do we have an additional copy here this evening?
It was actually on our agenda website. It was attached to the agenda, as I mentioned. We will also post it in a more prominent area on our website also, so.
We'll have one for you here in just a minute.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
Just to reiterate that Housing First with the services, with wraparound services, is proving for the positive, long-lasting stability and life change, which is psychoemotional in its deeper elements. As long as they're living in PTSD crisis with no housing, no address, no restroom, no trash, the life change element is very much runoff, as much as the benevolence and the intention is. And so Housing First is, with wraparound services, is what is proving to be the navigation center and the proven combination. I believe the point-in-time count, as I finish here, was 613, something like that. Eighty-two percent was Western Slope, and so the county with its budget... In Sacramento, the budget is $4 billion. It's only a four-to-one ratio to the city of $1 billion, but up here, the ratio is 25 to one of the county to the city's budget, and therefore, there should be some commensurate compensation and more involvement than perhaps is taking place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on 15.1? All right, seeing no one else approaching, I'll close this for public comment. This is a report only, no additional actions required. Chief, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, just to answer Sue's concern, the 100 homeless subjects versus 49 in the county, we believe part of that is, is that there has been a more concentrated effort to identify the folks within the city of Placerville versus the entire unincorporated area of Western Eldorado County. They've had the hot team since 2015, so that number's probably going to start to decline, at least our hope is, and if not, we'll try some other strategies, but I think that's kind of the initial shock value, for lack of a better term, and we're doing a better job now that we're tracking them without getting into the weeds. There's a whole database that we're using that's attached to the sheriff's department, where we're mapping out where they're located, where they were contacted, their names, their disposition, the last time they were contacted by law enforcement, a whole list of issues that were... That are related to that contact. So again, we hope that goes down as time goes on.
Well, we look forward to seeing the reports that are going to be coming through us for the rest of the year. Really appreciate the department's efforts, 24/7. All right, I believe we're going to move on to 15.2, which is a receiving file on Main Street Parklet, summer 2019 final evaluation. Mr. Revois?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff reported to you at your meeting on September 10 on the parklet, so here you have a little bit more detail in a staff report, and we also are providing to you the final report that was prepared by the Eldorado County Health and Human Services Agency on the parklet. Just real brief, the parklet was built with a $10,000 grant that the Eldorado County Health Department received from the 2016 Health Officers Association of California Communities Award. The parklet was constructed then and was put into place and opened to the public on May 23 of this year. The parklet is authorized to remain through the end of October and is to be removed on October 31, Halloween. The conclusions of the report just indicate that the parklet has been very much a success. that the parklet has been very much a success. I think staff can also attest to that anecdotally. We, we've been observing the park, parklet all spring and summer long and it's used by many people, both, both residents and visitors alike. It's brought new life to the creekside place by just slowing the pedestrians that go by and then they recognize that there's a lot of business and stuff that are down that, in that particular way. So staff will probably be coming back to the council with some alternatives on what to do with the parklet once, once this temporary use permit expires. Staff has been meeting with, with the staff of Eldorado County Health Department on what to do. And so with that, we're just asking you to receive and file the final evaluation report that was dated July of this year. And I'll be happy to answer, and answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Appreciate the report. There's any questions for Mr. Revoz on the parklet? It's summer on Main Street. I had one. Pierre, do you see, do you see interest in bringing it back in its existing form in a new location in 2020?
Yes. In fact, the parklet, we're very surprised. I mean, there was a concern that we had when the parklet went in. I was, everyone was worried, is it going to be vandalized? Will it be tagged? Will it be misused? I mean, if you've seen the parklet, it's even got artwork in it and stuff. It is, nobody's bothered it. It's been just a well-received, well-loved piece of furniture that we have on our Main Street. I think it's just really been an improvement to the public experience on Main Street. And so we're looking at possibly bringing some alternatives. You could choose to leave the parklet there permanently. It is weatherproof. Or we could remove it for the summer, for the duration of the winter and then bring it back again in the spring so that it could serve again as a spring, summer and early fall feature. But we'll, we'll come back with some options for you to consider.
Thank you, Pierre.
I have a question. Pierre, I noticed, and I noticed that it, it's already indicated, but somebody brought up to me and I was wondering about maybe moving it from different locations so that it's not, you know, just in the same spot if we do continue with it, with the usage.
We can certainly look at doing that. Moving it to another location.
I know. If we're going to do this, could we also, at that same time, explore the idea of, of potentially having these available in some fashion or another, either by lottery or something for restaurants to have out in front of their businesses?
Well, I kind of think that's what I was alluding to because it just seems like it would be more fair to have, you know, give another restaurant a chance to.
Timmy's Brown Bag has done really well.
I can, I can definitely think of another restaurant that might.
Is there any other restaurants on Main Street?
But those that want it and are willing to, you know, lottery or, because I imagine if we put it out there, a few restaurants might want to.
Lottery, that would be a very fair way to do it.
I agree. I'm even thinking another parklet or two, you know?
Although Patty wants to build more.
I guess the only comment staff could make for that is, you probably recall sometime in the past, the council considered and approved a sidewalk dining ordinance. And so restaurants do have, do have the ability to apply for permits to install sidewalk dining for, that would be very specific to their restaurants, as opposed to the parklet that would be open to the general public. If it's placed on, on, on Main Street in front of a restaurant, that restaurant couldn't just commodeer that parklet for its exclusive use. It would be open to the public. For example, if you observe the parklet where it's now situated, a lot of the patrons that utilize the parklet are, are customers of Timmy's Brown Bag. So they buy their, they buy their sandwich right there and then they sit down, have a nice comfortable place to eat it and observe the, the people passing by.
But isn't that giving, you know, that's added business for Timmy's. I mean, you know, that's my point. And a lot of the restaurants, I don't know, Carol, point job, I, I don't know that they have room to put outside dining on.
It's in a parking space.
You know, and so, but if, no, if that were in the parking space, then it would give them a chance for outdoor, you know, that's just kind of what I was thinking.
We need to check with Commander Rand, who's where it needs to go to because he's a bit of a food aficionado too.
So staff will, will propose to come back to the council with various options and locations for the parklet.
Nick has been known to stop and eat too. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on this item, this final report and the future of the parklet? We have a street piano now, I see. It gets covered up.
I heard it the other day.
It's growing.
Sue Rodman, and I like our parklet. And I would hope if we're going to, that I'm glad to hear it might come back next year too. And I would say, when we look at positioning it, please look at visibility of pedestrians. Because right now, the parklet sits, as you come down Main Street, you see the parklet and you, it hides pedestrians on that crosswalk. So I'd suggest look at visibility for pedestrians and put it on the other side of any crosswalk that you put it next to, so that pedestrians would be visible to people coming down the street, depending on which, which side of the street you put it on. And for the traffic, to make sure that pedestrians can be visible from the traffic when you put your parklet next to a crosswalk.
Staff could comment on that. There was a lot of consideration on where to put that parklet. If, if you recall, there were a number of examples that were considered by the council. The parklet basically was put in this location, and this is the first we heard of there being any kind of a sight distance issue. So we could certainly look at that. We place it on the east side of the, of the ballabout as opposed to the west because we felt that it would be safer for cars actually to drive into the parking stall and avoid hitting the parklet as opposed to if it was on the other side of the ballabout that cars backing up, maybe be more prone to hitting it. So again, there was a lot of consideration to where the, where the parklet went. And this is the first we heard of a sight distance issue.
Well, my concern is that when I'm coming down Main Street and I notice that there's pedestrians, especially, especially children who are shorter, you don't see them behind the parklet. So that's my concern, is pedestrian safety there.
You have to be, you have to be this tall.
And I think that, I'm not sure, people backing into a parking place, yeah, that could be a little dicey. But I think that pedestrians need the, need that protection and need that visibility. Just my comment.
Thank you, Sue. Is there another comment on the parklet?
Being a Cesuat Pedilian and a philologist, having been to London, Paris and Rome several times, I am very proud as a Placerville citizen to know that we have a parklet. I have no idea what the parklet is, although I am fluent in three or four languages, French, Spanish, Greek and American mongrel attempt at English. But could we get a definition of the parklet for perhaps others watching this exciting?
It was quite the thing. I'll have, I'll have Mr. Revoz give you a brief description of the parklet.
What'd he say?
Yes, the parklet is, is basically an enclosed seating area that occupies a single parking stall along Main Street. And so you can, what I recommend you do if you're interested in parklets is just get on your computer, Google parklet, and you will see all kinds of makes and models. They're, they're all, they're, they're all over the world and all major cities have parklets.
Is it P-A-R-K-L-E-T? E-T, yeah.
Parklet.
Parklet. English word.
So it's mainly a place for, it's mainly a place for pedestrians to sit and stay and watch the world go by.
But they've, but they've been proven to, that's why the health department had the grant. It's soothing for people to, you know, it's another way of, saw it on TV the other night and I was noticing that they, they were saying that there's some cities that they actually sell the parking places out in front. I mean, the businesses and establish their own.
All right. So it sounded like a direction to staff to bring back at some time in the future, the reinstallation of the parklet for 2020. Let it, let it rest this winter. All right. Well, we have a number of upcoming items due to the hour. I won't go through all of those. The, so there being no other business regular scheduled, or no other business scheduled this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn us to our next meeting of October 20, excuse me, October 8th at 5:30 PM. Thank you and good night.